I always knew that we could survive. It's not so big a world outside. So if you wanna go, alright. Just leave it on your way out. In the night, can't say whether this is good or bad. We could go all night. Just tell me what you think is right. Love me. Love me forever. Love me would be so much easier. Before you leave in the morning light. Let all these questions pass you by. So if you wanna try, alright. But don't keep asking for a sign. Don't turn around. There's not much here left to define. Is it a star? Something I can call mine? Love me. Love me forever. Would be so much easier. Everyone can see where this is headed. Where we're going. And I can always be the one that lets you down. And I can always be. I can always be the one. I can always be. And I can always be the one that lets you down. Love me. Love me forever. Love me would be so much easier. Love me. Love me forever. Love me would be so much easier. Would be so much easier.
Don't take me for a fool. Don't underestimate my kindness when you're cruel. There's so much I can take. All my battle scars. Put me under pressure, made me diamond heart. And all these battle scars. Might cut you to the core, but make you who you are. You tried to sell me your lies. You tried to break down and cry. Looking back at your smile. Through all your sticks and stones, you couldn't break my bones. My heart, my scars. Made me diamond heart. My scars. Made me diamond heart. Battle scars. Made me diamond heart. War and scars. I've crumbled, but I learned. To grow from all the pain. Let every bridge I burned. Burn bright to light my way. All my battle scars. Put me under pressure, made me diamond heart. And all these battle scars. Might cut you to the core, but make you who you are. You tried to sell me your lies. You tried to break down and cry. But looking back at your smile. Through all your sticks and stones, you couldn't break my bones. You tried to sell me your lies. You tried to break down and cry. But looking back at your smile. Through all your sticks and stones, you couldn't break my bones. My heart, my scars. Made me diamond heart. War and 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 scars. You tried to sell me your lies. You tried to break down and cry. But looking back at your smile. Through all your sticks and stones, you couldn't break my bones. I say, I really, really wanna. You think I'm really, really gonna? I'm an illusionist, throwing cards and doing tricks. The weather's better where I'm going. Where the green grass growing. Call it imaginative. I say it's the greatest gift, 'cause oh, I move so naturally. Sway my hips so you can see. It's the only way to be. Now you got to follow me. And I move my head from left to right. Everybody, it's a brand new song. Buckle up and follow me. And I move my feet like one, two, three. Everybody in symmetry. Ah-oo. So buckle up and follow me. Follow me. And follow me.
It is a masterpiece.
You said, now is what we're given. I said, now is how we're living. Oh, yeah, I'm just that good. Making gold out of wood. That world's giving me all time. I squeeze out a really good sound. Ba-ba, ba-da-la-ba. Ba-ba-ba, ba-da-la-ba. Oh, I move so naturally. Sway my hips so you can see. It's the only way to be. Now you got to follow me. And I move my head from left to right. Everybody, it's a brand new song. Ah-oo. Now buckle up and follow me. And I move my feet like one, two, three. Everybody in symmetry. Ah-oo. Now buckle up and follow me. And follow me. And follow me. See, the world is painted black and white. Close your eyes for a colorful sight. Look inside, and you will find the answers right inside your mind. The world is painted black and white. Close your eyes for a colorful sight. Look inside, and you will find the answers right inside your mind. Inside your mind. Inside your mind.
It is a masterpiece.
The broadcast is now starting. All attendees in listen-only mode.
Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call this Tampa City Council Meeting to Order. Happy New Year. This is our first meeting of the year. Before we go to invocation and Pledge of Allegiance, if we could have a moment of silence for two individuals. The first one is Hillsborough County Deputy Corporal Brian Levine, who was killed a few days ago. If you've watched the news and you've seen this gentleman, who was one shift away from retirement, was killed in the line of duty. As well as TPD Attorney Kirby Rainsberger, who served with the city for just under 30 years, passed away, I believe, yesterday. Beloved member of the City of Tampa family, a gentleman that I had the opportunity to know, a friend to many. He passed away. So if we could have a moment of silence for these two gentlemen. Thank you very much. And at this time, I'd like to yield to Councilmember Bill Carlson, who will be introducing our guest today for the invocation.
Good morning, everybody. I have the privilege of introducing Erica Allen in South Tampa. I pop into or attend lots of different churches, and this is one that I attend. It's a relatively new church, a year and a half or so old. It's called Horizon. And Erica and her husband Chris have built this really unique following. One thing people say about churches is that religion is dying, and younger people don't want to participate. And they draw people of all ages, but in particular, they're drawing lots of young families in South Tampa and building a community of folks who work on projects throughout South Tampa. Also, they're very technologically savvy, which has come in handy in the last few months. So anyway, without further ado, I'll introduce Erica to give the invocation. Should we stand?
Yeah, please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
First, I would just like to say thank you so much for the opportunity to be here. And I would like to also say thank you to each of the City Council members who show up today and are doing your job to represent democracy. And I thank you for each of the citizens who've shown up today to respectfully participate in democracy, something that has been an interesting issue in our country the last few weeks. So thank you to those of you who have shown up. Tomorrow is the actual date of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday. We celebrate his birthday with a national holiday on Monday. And in light of what has been experienced in this country in recent months, I just want to honor the legacy of Dr. King and so many activists and Black Americans who have worked for what Dr. King calls "the beloved community." And I know we've had a moment of silence, but I just want us to have a moment of silence to honor the legacy of those who've worked so hard for us to have a beloved community and hear maybe what it is, the divine, what God would call us to do in this moment. So if we could just start with a moment of silence, and then I'll begin the prayer. Dear God, we come this morning, some of us still reeling from horror and yet filled with hope. We are reminded that our actions here at a City Council meeting often involve hearing issues around what we call "a grassroots movement." And we just pray, God, that the seeds that are sown here will take root and that they will begin to grow something beautiful and amazing in this city. Bless the grassroots effort of your people, God. We come this morning longing for kindness and love and generosity to lead the way. We are reminded that each council member here this morning deeply loves this great city. I pray that their decisions, their actions, their lives will radiate kindness and love and generosity in a world that needs it so desperately. I pray for each person who will speak today, God. May we recognize the power of our words and use them to build up this community. We come this morning longing for strength and unity. Open our eyes to inequities and open our ears and our hearts to hard conversations. May we remember that real strength is found in the courage to be vulnerable, in the bravery to see the unseen, in the quest to do what is right for all people. Make Tampa strong and unify us for the work of building a beloved community right here. We come this morning longing for the day that our policies and our systems are not wrought with racism. And we thank you for the witness of Dr. King and for Tampa activists who worked so hard to begin this important work, like Clarence Fort, Reverend Leon Lowry, Glennie Ross James, and so many others. God, may their work not be in vain. Empower us to continue the work that they started right here in Tampa. God, we also come this morning tired and weary from fighting a pandemic for months and months and months. We ask for you to strengthen every healthcare worker right now. We ask you to grant hope to the weary. Help us to love our neighbors and comfort those who grieve. We're thankful for a vaccine, God, and we pray that it will be in the arms of our most vulnerable quickly and efficiently. Give us wisdom for that process. Heal our land from this virus and the detrimental effects of it. God, we can't forget the citizens of this great city who are lonely, addicted, depressed, desperate, hungry, and homeless. Show us how to be a community that cares and let us surround one another with love and support. Bless the work of this first meeting of 2021 and bless the work of this body and this community for the year ahead. Use this room full of representatives and concerned citizens to shine your light and ignite your change in a world that is desperate for a new day. Guide Tampa to continue to be one of the best cities in the entire world. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. You receive the flag with the hands of one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Vera.
Here.
Goode.
Here.
Carlson.
Here.
Ding Felder.
Here.
Citra.
Here.
Miranda.
Here.
Meniscus.
Here.
Mr. Shelby.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of City Council and the public. Martin Shelby, City Council Attorney. Today is Thursday, January 14, 2021. And we're here at the Tampa Convention Center for a regular agenda meeting, which is a hybrid live and remote. And this is being conducted during the COVID-19 state of emergency. There is an in-person quorum present, and the public has the option of remote participation using what is referred to by the State of Florida statutes and rules as communications media technology. And the meeting is held in accordance with emergency rules of procedure as adopted by the City Council. It's available to be seen on cable TV at Spectrum Channel 640, Frontier Channel 15, and on the internet at www.tampa.gov/live. The public is able to participate using communications media technology with the following alternative methods, and that is in-person here at the Tampa Convention Center, speaking remotely during public comment, by the internet, the web, the email, by voicemail, and by U.S. mail. And for those who don't want to appear in this room but do want to use communications media technology, there is a kiosk outside this meeting room at the Tampa Convention Center for the use of the public. Again, use of masks and social distancing inside this building are required. And again, counsel, for the public, if you wish to participate in future meetings, because there are deadlines for registration required, I suggest you please go to Tampa.gov/citycouncil, one word, to the City Council webpage for additional instructions. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you very much. Next up, we have approval of the agenda and the addendum. Councilman Citra, I believe you wanted to make a motion to continue item number three.
That is correct, if we could.
All right, when do you want to continue to? February 4?
February 4 would be fine. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
We have a motion from Councilman Citra. We have a second, Councilman Goode, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, next up, Councilman Vera, you wish to continue item number eight to February 18th, is that correct?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. And I need to be specific as to the direction. It's to allow continued meetings with staff and stakeholders. I motion for a continuance in the first reading of the draft ordinance from today to the regular session of February 18, 2021. There, we continue to meet on the apprenticeship ordinance with community stakeholders for some incremental changes and whatnot, and we continue to have negotiations and talking. And I'm an optimist, and I believe that it's going to be ultimately successful. One of the changes I'd also like to include in this motion prospectively is a provision addressing retainage as an incentive component of the ordinance concurrent with the present provisions in the ordinance, if I may.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Vera, second from Councilman Goode, I believe. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right. All right, in regards to our staff reports, I know we have a lot of staff on standby going through items 77 through 89. Councilman Ding Felder, go ahead, sir.
I believe that in regard to item 37, that there had been a request or an agreement from the administration to continue that for two weeks. And Mr. Bennett was here a second ago.
Mr. Chair, whenever you...
This was in regard to the Pure Project.
And, Mr. Chairman...
Mr. Bennett leave, or is he in the hall?
I believe he's not present.
No, but I see here...
There is a memorandum.
Yeah, there's a request that the agenda be placed under Staff Reports. But I believe this was continued.
John Bennett. John, I raised item 37 in regard to the two-week continuance.
John Bennett, Chief Staff. Sorry, Councilman, could you repeat that?
I said, in regard to the two-week continuance on item 37 for the Pure Project.
Correct.
Is that the staff's request?
Yes, there was a memo sent by Attorney Jam McLean, approved by my office, and sent yesterday to council.
Okay, so it was late arriving memo from the administration.
Yeah, so we won't have item number 37 today. It'll be two weeks out, so it won't be under Staff Reports. I'll scratch that out. Councilman Carlson.
I'm sorry, that hasn't been moved for a continuance.
The motion would be to move it for two weeks, to put it under Staff Reports two weeks from now.
Okay, Councilman Carlson.
Two weeks from February 4.
February 4.
If I could, I think we ought to move this to May because it needs time to, for the proper research to be done and for proper public input to be gathered. I don't know yet whether I'm for or against this project, and the comments I'll make are not necessarily for or against the project. The problem is the way the project has been presented. And I think it's part of an old culture in the Water Department that the new mayor and administration have been trying to change. I've expressed my concerns to Mr. Bennett and others. This project, remember, a year and a half ago, we asked for the Toilet-to-Tap project to be sidelined. And thank you to you all, and I think you probably have gotten lots of praise from the community for sidelining that project. Similarly, it was rammed down the community and tried to, in the Water Department, tried to push it quickly. We asked for an alternatives analysis, and the staff came back with an alternatives analysis that included the alternatives that I had proposed, not any other. I'm not a water engineer, but they proposed ones that I had proposed. And they did it in a half-hearted way that was not a fair apples-and-apples comparison of the alternatives. And the community wants a fair apples-and-apples comparison. The way this was rolled out was, at least for me, is I didn't... Every water project that comes up, I ask, does it include Toilet-to-Tap or any new version? And I keep hearing, no, 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 no. But a week before Christmas, I get a call that says that this project is coming up. And in the conversation, the staff says, "We are working to quote-unquote 'sell' the community on this project." And the fact that it was launched during a pandemic, when people are hurting for money and they would rather have their bills reduced. It's being pushed now, when we had an uprising in DC last week. There are all kinds of things going on in the world, plus the holidays. We had several holidays during the break, and this was mostly pushed during that time. Several groups were met with and given partial information, but they don't have enough to make any kind of decision on it. Then the staff represented in an email, to me at least, and maybe more of you, that said that these groups approved the project, and they had not. They're withholding their judgment. They're not for or against it because they don't have enough information. So the Water Department's attitude is, "Well, we just need two more weeks to quote-unquote 'sell' them on the project." Well, the problem is that the Water Department has a transparency problem and a trust problem with the community. The old way of doing projects like this 20, 30 years ago was that you sell and force the community to accept them. Nowadays, what you do is you come up with an honest alternatives analysis. You look at, what is the problem? What are the alternatives? And you present the alternatives, and then you ask the public their feedback on the alternatives. But it has to be a fair apples-and-apples comparison. You can't skew it like they did the last time. And you can't put false information in there, misrepresenting what certain people say. And I have a concern that if some information is being misrepresented, how do we know that all of it is accurate? So we look at the science of it, the efficacy of the project. We need to have transparency in this. We need a true alternatives analysis. By the way, I'm told in a memo that was forwarded to me, actually by a county commissioner, that 30% of the design of this project is done already. And my question is, where did the money come from to do that? Because every time the Water Department has had a budget item come up, I've asked them if it included this project, and they said no. And several other folks have talked to the Water Department. It sounds like there are slush funds out there that they draw from in these projects. And I'll give you one other item of the level of mistrust. Last, a year and a half ago, there was a quality issue that was misrepresented about the quality of the region's water as compared to Tampa's water. Well, now we find out, two weeks ago, the Tampa Bay Times wrote a story that said the City of Tampa is paying $1.9 million to fix the water quality problem. The water quality problem that the residents of our community knew all along was there. This is also the same Water Department that a couple of weeks ago shut down our water supply for five days and never told us exactly why. The only answer we got was that a third-party contractor burst the pipe. I don't know if you all watched online, but the residents were irate because they had to boil their water, and they were mad because the Water Department was not transparent and communicative. And I know in talking to Chief Bennett and Gene Duncan and others, that they're working hard to try to change these transparency issues. But this is a $350 to $400 million project and a $10 million budget for research, when it seems that the Water Department has enough money to do research and planning already without even getting our approval. I have a lot of concerns about this, and the community has a lot of concerns about it. The first time most people in the community learned about it was yesterday in the Times story. And you can't run a city by not giving the public information. And it's not about selling, and it's not about saying, "Oh, if they just had the information, they would be okay with it." What are the alternatives? And what are the problems that are causing this? One of the problems is that they're claiming that Tallahassee is forcing us to do it. I had three lobbyists in Tallahassee tell me that they saw representatives of the Water Department in Tallahassee lobbying for this. If that's true, did City Council approve having them lobby for it? Why would the City of Tampa lobby for something that's going to cost us $400 million? Shouldn't we have lobbied against it or lobbied to edit it? You know, there are a lot of questions related to this. There are issues about the environment. There are issues about the environment, about minimum flows, and about sulfur springs. They came up slightly a year and a half ago, but a year and a half ago, the volume of water or the quantity of water was the big issue. Now suddenly environmental issues. What happens is they keep repackaging these things to sell the public. In their own words, they're selling the public. We cannot do that. We have to build trust. We have to bring out honest, factual information and give the public choices. And I think we have to ask the staff to do an honest analysis, go to the public. Remember, in the rate case, we asked them to have robust public input. I think they had four or five public meetings. I attended almost all of them, and none of them had more than 20 or 30 people, because they didn't adequately communicate them. And what happened when the water bills came up? We all got complaints, because most people didn't know about it. We have to change the way we engage the public, and we have to trust the public, not try to convince them. We have to give them honest information and let them give us feedback. And then, based on that, we can make the decision. And if it comes back that the public supports this particular project, I'll support it. If the public doesn't, but they support an alternative, I'll support that. It's not that I don't want to support a solution to the problem, if these problems exist, but we need an honest, factual, transparent way of going about it. Thank you.
Dinkfelder.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The reason I made the motion is I think that we do need to let this breathe a little bit and give people the opportunity to ask questions over the next two weeks. During the Christmas holidays, when this project was presented to me, I spent a lot of the Christmas holidays, as much to my wife's chagrin, reading two big notebooks, about 400 total pages, a 2018 and a 2019 report on this. I have not committed in regard to how I'm going to vote. I usually just don't commit until I get all the information. Bill, I'm not going to argue with...you brought up some good points. There are other points I might disagree with you, but I'm not going to argue with you today. My motion is very simple, is to continue this for two weeks, to give you and the community and the Sierra Club and other representatives of the environmental community a chance to continue to look at this and ask all the questions everybody wants to. If two weeks from now, everybody's still not satisfied, then you can make another motion to put it off until May. But for right now, I'm comfortable with that. And the other...I met with the mayor, talked to her a few times, as I'm sure everybody did, and she not only agreed to the two-week continuance without any objection, but she also agreed to my request and Sierra Club's request to make sure that there is another set of eyes on this, that instead of just one group of scientists that we've hired for several years who are doing this project, to bring in an objective, another group to objectively look at all the scientific data and conclusions. So I'm not saying it's the end of the deal. I'm not saying any of that. I'm just saying, let's let it breathe for two weeks. That's my motion.
Mr. Chair.
Wait.
Chair, this item is on the addendum to be continued to February 4th at 2021. Number 37 is on the addendum.
It is on the addendum?
Yeah. Councilman Goode's and Councilman Carlson.
To my colleagues, I appreciate the conversation. I too had some concerns getting calls over the Christmas break about a major item that's talking about a lot of money down the road. I asked the question, were the other environmental groups involved? And I was told, yes, they seem to be on board, but then I hadn't committed, but I was looking down the road to say, possibly, okay, for impossible, it's $10 million to do the study or this analytical study. But then I got several calls finding out that the environmental groups were not on board, didn't have enough information. And I immediately called Mr. Weber to express that. I think the big ballpark figure is when I met with them our first year, when we talked about pipes and tap, I said, we can't keep coming back nickel and dime to the public, so we need to make sure we have everything inclusive. That didn't happen. And my concern right now, today, is I think that Mr. Dinkfelder's right, and Mr. Carlson's right. We need to take a step back and to make sure that this city and the folks who live in this city know about what we're going to do or proposal to do. I don't think the citizens have enough time to understand what the undertaking is to move forward. I don't...I'm not saying the project's bad. I'm not saying it's good. I'm not a scientist. I'm not a water guy. That's not my expertise. But I'm open to hear everything to make a good decision that's best for the city and citizens. Sometimes our citizens don't agree with some decisions we make, but we try to make the best decision we can to move the city forward. So I'm in agreeance to hold back the two weeks for discussion. If it needs more discussion, we always can do that. But I think that we have to make sure that the community...and again, we talk about communication. We're spending money on communications. I see a new website going on. We've got to be able to get it out to the people, so they can be able to tell us, because there can be some scientists out there that we don't know about it, know about the system we're talking about. So I think that Mr. Dinkfelder, you're right on. Mr. Carlson here as well, and we can move the needle a little bit later, once we get a little bit more information. I yield back to the chair.
Carlson and Viera.
I think the big issue, I mentioned, is trust. The other thing is that the public cannot make a choice, because there are no choices. There's only one option being presented. And the choices that were presented a couple of years ago are not applicable anymore. Some of them may or may not be, but there's not an apples-and-apples comparison. So how can the public make a choice? The only thing the staff's going to do is have more meetings where they present the information and try to sell this to the public, but the public wants choices. What we're doing is we're saying that we don't trust the public to give feedback on what the choices are. And so whether we make a motion here today or whether staff comes back, I think, knowing the good intentions of the senior management, the mayor, I wish the staff would come back to us and say, we've decided to put this on hold and do a true alternatives analysis. The answer today will be, well, we've got to rush this, because Swift...we need Swift Mud matching money. We want to be first in line. The people I've talked to and around Swift Mud said, that's not accurate. You don't need to rush. Waiting till May is not going to affect our ability to get funding. So what's the harm in delaying it and doing an honest alternatives analysis? In the end, we all might agree with the proposal that staff has made, but bring us along with the analysis. Bring the public along with the analysis, so the public can trust the solution.
Councilman Viera.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm prepared to support Councilman Dinkfelder's motion. I think those who have spoken, I think, all agree that we are stepping back a little bit, and the issue is whether or not we step back in a collaborative way or step back in a way that could, how shall I say, presume some mistrust in the process. I think that all seven of us agree that, in working with the administration, in every single, most every single, I'll say, in my opinion, every single department administration, that folks have been collaborative, folks have been bending over backwards to work with us with all of our concerns, et cetera, et cetera. And I think that by going two weeks, that does not preclude going to May. If in two weeks, there's still a lot of questions that are had, et cetera, then we'll probably get a seven-to-zero vote to go to May. But I think that two weeks is a reasonable step to take at this time, which is a collaborative step back that has everybody on board. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I agree. If in two weeks, we still have questions and issues, then we make a motion to kick this back to May. I think that's fair, but from now to two weeks, which is February 4th, the exact date, we'll see where we're at, and we'll take a motion from there. So Councilman Dinkfelder, you had a motion for a two-week continuance to...
And the clerk points out that that is part of the addendum, so I apologize for even bringing it up.
Mr. Shelvin.
And also, just for the sake of clarity and for the record for council's information, I believe, is that three weeks, Madam Clerk? I believe we have a meeting on the 21st and the workshop on the 28th.
So it's February 4th.
It's three weeks.
All right. Councilman Miranda.
Chairman, before we take a vote on this, I'd like the administration to at least have the presence to be able to address the situation that we're talking about. I think that'd only be in fairness and in honesty. And by the way, I've never been misled by any city department head. If I did, I'd ask for them to be removed from office. Mr. Chairman.
Chief Bennett.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Miranda and council. As I mentioned before, the memo came in with the continuance. It was on the addendum. I think Jan McLean, our city attorney, assistant city attorney, is on the line, and if she wants to speak to the memo that she drafted, I would yield to her and her virtual position at this point.
All right. Jan McLean.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Bennett. This is Jan. I did draft the memo requesting that the item be rescheduled to the February 4th regular council meeting for consideration at that time, and we would continue to participate as Mr. Dinkfelder has indicated with the groups that we've worked with. But I also believe that Jean Duncan is on the line if she wanted to make any kind of statements with regard to staff activities. I would yield to her.
All right. We have Jean Duncan on the line. Any questions for Ms. Duncan? Hearing none, seeing none. We have a motion from Councilman Dinkfelder for a continuance to February 4th.
Second.
We have a second from Councilman Goode's. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I voted for it, but can I just make one quick comment?
Sure.
I voted for it, because I appreciate the administration delaying this. But Jean's on the line, and I've spoken to her at length about this, and I have the emails where I and others have disputed the facts that were presented, and I shared it also with Chief Bennett. I hope that the...I hope that the water department will come back and say, we want to have an honest, transparent conversation with the public and present honest alternatives to the public and fully engage the public in this process. It'll help build trust. Otherwise, what will happen if they go on a sales process the next two weeks is that public's going to gear up, and we're going to have a lot of protesters here telling us that we have to delay it again, and it's unnecessary. Ideally, the water department before February 4th will come back and say, we voluntarily decided to change the process, because we think that's the best thing to do. Thank you.
Very good. That settles that. Going back to the original question for staff, item 77 through 89, is there anyone that we don't need present, so we can clear this up now and release them? Councilman Goode's.
I remember 86, you received a memo in reference to it. I did talk to Ms. Feeley about that, and she's going to get online to discuss what we can't do, what we can do at this point, so there may be some changes on that.
So you do not need Ms. Feeley present?
No, I need her. She's going to get on and speak about item 86.
She is? So we'll need 86, 85, of course. We have that regarding Tampa Fire. 87's been continued. 88, regarding the flood ordinance, we'll have Ms. Feeley already on the line. 89 is just the calendar. 80 is wastewater bonds. We have another memo from Abby Feeley. Abby Feeley, Tampa Police and Legal for 83. 84, we have Tampa Fire here. 79, those are just large contracts with Mr. Baird, so I think we're set on that. So it's just Baird and Feeley.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. With regard to those that were placed on there, the large-ticket items?
Yes.
If those don't have the need for discussion, you can handle them without staff, if that's council's pleasure.
Anybody have any objection to that for 77, 78, 79? It's 3.8, 3.1, and $5 million. Any questions on that? Anybody?
Which one is it?
77, 78, and 79.
I don't have any questions on it. I just wanted to point out, and I can't remember exactly which one of these items, but I think two of these items have very good EBO minority vending participation. And I just wanted to give a shout-out to the administration, and specifically to Mr. Baird and his team and Jean Duncan for working really hard and listening to council and the community to make sure that we increase our minority participation. And I can't remember, two out of these three were very, very good and great improvements, so thank you.
So we will not need Mr. Baird or anybody?
I think 77 had low participation.
I don't need him.
Councilman Goode's. Councilman Goode's, if you could speak directly into the microphone. I know you're wearing the City of Tampa mask. It's thick, and I know your voice is a little muffled, just to make sure that everyone can hear you.
I looked at 77. I wasn't too clear. Two out of three, Mr. Dinkfelder was right. 77, I wasn't too happy with. Like I said, we'll wait till after the 28th, when we start discussing the EBO. I'll yield back, sir. Thank you.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion to approve the agenda and the addendum?
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Goode, a second from Councilman Miranda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? All right. Ceremonial activity. We have a motion from Councilman Goode to present Vanessa McCleary with a commendation. Councilman Goode's, go ahead, sir.
Good morning again, gentlemen, and Happy New Year to you.
Happy New Year.
And to our citizens as well, and staff. This morning, we have the pleasure of giving Ms. Vanessa McCleary our housing, former housing director, a person who's done a lot with our housing communities, a lot when the pandemic occurred, making sure that our residents and business owners be able to move forward, keep their business doors open, keep their mortgages paid, their utility bills. And I think that's a great success, that the city was able to do something in a short order. It was a grave undertaking, and I know that that department has a lot of moving parts, and a lot of things get thrown into that department, and I know it's very busy with short staff over there, but they work very hard over there. Ms. Vanessa B. McCleary, Housing and Community Development Manager. City Council presents this commendation to Ms. Vanessa B. McCleary in honor of her service to the City of Tampa as the Housing and Community Development Manager. As a health and human service professional, you've provided extensive community development expertise for the city's Housing and Community Development Division. Vanessa assisted with the coordination of over 40 different programs. Her service was very successful in promoting fair housing, downtown redevelopment, historic preservation, and neighborhood revitalization. She is recognized as Housing Councilor of the Year for the National Federation of Housing Counselors and co-authored the first nationally-recognized housing counseling certification test. Vanessa has helped assist many low and moderate-income residents with a dream of home ownership in the City of Tampa. Her work as the manager and community advocate has inspired the Foundation for Affordable Housing and created strategic partnerships between local business owners. Vanessa McCleary has demonstrated herself through the improvising, innovative, and true servant to our community. In gratitude to such efforts, the City of Tampa represents the commendation of Ms. Vanessa McCleary on the 14th day of January 2021. Thank you, Ms. McCleary, for your work and your efforts. Again, I think housing is a big issue across the country, especially in our city, and sorry that you moved on to bigger, better things, but we're going to miss you, but we want to make sure that we did give you something to take with you. Like I said a few words. Can you step a little bit?
It really does mean a lot. I am leaving the City of Tampa government, but I am not leaving the City of Tampa. I just feel that I can do more to expedite affordable housing and help build a community from the outside. So I really want to thank the staff that I worked with. They are very dedicated, very passionate. I want to thank Bob Buckhorn for hiring me, Bob Beddona for supporting me, and during this new administration, I do give thanks to Carol for pushing me. We did a lot in a very short period of time, and that was because of her, and I really do appreciate her for that. I also want to thank you, the council, for being so supportive. I have been out at events with just about all of you. I know that you really care about this city, and I know that the city is ready to go to the next level. The one thing that I do hope is that when that next budget, and I'm going to throw a stone right now, but I'm not...I'm going to show my hands, when the next budget comes through, please, 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 make sure that there is funding in there for more staff in the Housing and Community Development Division. They work very hard, and a lot is asked of them, and it's not fair. I think they do need more staffing and more funding. We can't do this all just on government funding. Again, I thank you for this honor and this recognition.
Councilman Dinkfelder.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Vanessa, a little plaque and our words are not near enough to thank you for your hard work. I know personally, I didn't know enough about affordable housing. And in the last year and a half of working with you, you taught me so much, and I so appreciate it. Community appreciates you, and I do as well. Thank you very much. Good luck.
Thank you.
Councilman Carlson?
I just want to thank you, too. I appreciated working with you. I appreciate your hard work, and I also felt bad that we weren't able to help you. But you did a lot with the limited staff and limited budget, and we're all going to keep up the good fight to put more money and resources in affordable housing. Look forward to working with you and the community. Thanks for all you've done.
Councilman Vera?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No, just thank you for all your service. And I think your words on additional funding for staff is very well taken. I think it goes to a larger issue, which is the public perception of a lot of social welfare agencies and public entities, which is there's a perception that the, you know, it's top-heavy. There's a perception of the bureaucracy and this and that. Whereas the truth is, is that these kinds of social services in our country and in our city and in our county and in our state are woefully underfunded. And so what you said is very, very well taken, and we have to fight that public perception. You know, there's that perception of bureaucracy and of waste. And obviously, there's waste everywhere, right? But certainly, when it comes to social welfare, I think the presumption we ought to begin at is that we need to do more and we need to do better. So your words are well taken, and thank you for your service.
Thank you very much. All right, thank you. Next up, we have the Sierra Club with a 10-minute presentation.
Can I set this up?
Go ahead, sir.
You know, Councilman Citro brought up some environmental issues presented by Phil Compton from Sierra Club and Brooke Errett. And there's a coalition of several environmental groups that had proposed that. And so thank you to Councilman Citro for suggesting that. And that process now is continuing as these groups meet with the Chamber and other groups. Nick Glover for the Chamber is here. And so thanks to everybody for being involved in that. Today, what they're being asked to do is just present their five-year vision, five- or 10-year vision. You know, what's coming up, and the idea is so that we don't get blindsided, you know, with the next issue coming up, and that the Business Committee and others don't get blindsided. What's the big vision for the environment in Tampa? So I'll be quiet and let them speak. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, if I can?
Yes, sir.
I'll have a statement after they are finished. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Mr. Compton?
Thank you. I'm Phil Compton, Senior Organizing Representative with Sierra Club. I work on clean energy issues, and with me today is Brooke Errett, Organizing Representative with the Florida Food and Water Watch. Brooke?
Okay, is our presentation slideshow set? There we go.
Go ahead.
Wonderful. Well, Happy New Year, and thank you for prioritizing our presentation at this first meeting of the year. As Phil said, I'm Brooke Errett with Food and Water Watch, and we're also here with the Tampa Bay Climate Alliance. We want to start by thanking Councilman Citro for sponsoring this legislation and Councilman Carlson for initiating this presentation. Also, thank you to Chairman Iskalko for putting this presentation on the agenda. And thank you to all of the council for giving us this space when you have such a big agenda to attend to today. Today, we are here to present on the steps that the city council and city can take to move to a 100% clean energy future by 2030. Keep in mind that we understand the city is already doing a lot of this stuff, which is why Tampa exceeds other cities and is already on road to success. And in the interest of time, we have provided you with a handout that goes more in-depth and offers resources on the initiatives we're suggesting today. With that, I turn you over to my colleague, Phil Compton, to discuss the first step that you, as the city council, can take in moving to a clean energy future. Next slide.
Well, like anything else in life, the first step to achieving something is to set a goal. Now, Tallahassee being what it is, we're one of the few states that does not have a goal for clean energy. It's up to the cities in Florida to do it themselves. 11 Florida cities have already done that. It's our turn now. We also need to join with these cities and advocate for clean energy policy at the state level. Next slide, please. Once we act, we'll be in good company. Over 100 million Americans in big cities like Chicago and Atlanta, and Florida cities like St. Pete and Orlando, even small ones like Safety Harbor and Cocoa are already at work today on their clean energy future. Next slide, please.
And the second step after passing a commitment would be to commit to no new fossil fuel infrastructure. It's easy. It's an early step that you and the city can take to ensure a clean energy future. By doing so, you are setting a standard for no further investment in dirty fossil fuel energy. The best thing about this commitment is that there's no associated direct capital expenditures. You're merely making a commitment to invest in the future of Tampa. And despite concerns, what we're looking at here would allow for the continued use of existing infrastructure. That means that entities like the airport and TGH and the port could continue their necessary use of infrastructure during this process and repair their existing infrastructure when necessary until the transition can be made. Keep in mind that all of the ins and outs of this process will ultimately be determined through the Clean Energy and Action Plan currently underway. In no way are we asking council or the city to shut down any existing infrastructure. Instead, we're finding a way to work together to find the best plan to move forward on our collective goal to make Tampa the clean energy leader we all know we can be. And there are several things that you, as city council, could do in this process. First, you can update codes to prevent further investment in dirty energy by precluding permitting for new fossil fuel infrastructure. And we also, though, in this process, need to recognize the needs of our community and plan for aiding in the transition. In particular, certain industries like restaurants currently depend on their access to methane gas for operations. Well, we can help develop programs that aid in that transition from fossil fuels to clean energy sources and not put the burden on the community partners that sustain our city. Next slide.
Mayor Castor is following her plan, her commitments, and her priorities and leading the way with the appointment of her new Advisory Council on Sustainability and Resilience, which I'm honored to serve on, staffed by our new Sustainability and Resilience Director, Whit Reamer, and chaired by Representative Kathy Castor, who is also the Chair of the U.S. House Select Committee on the Climate Crisis. We're very lucky to have Mayor Castor and Representative Castor working to lead our city, district, and nation to a future with clean energy for all. But even with as distinguished a panel as the mayor's gathered, present company accepted, we must also ensure that any plan truly addresses the needs of all our residents, from culvert aisles to sulfur springs, for we're all, in different ways, all on the front lines of climate change. And there is a role for council to guide this process. Next slide, please.
Well, one of the most exciting steps that we can take is increasing energy efficiency. The American Council for an Energy-Efficient Economy has found that the City of Tampa has a multitude of opportunities for expanding our energy efficiency, which is awesome because energy efficiency is year one, the fastest, cheapest, and easiest way to decrease our energy needs. And by starting with an energy audit in the first year, you can identify those current inefficiencies. Next, you could start investing in efficiency now. Cities have been investing in Energy Star purchasing programs, prioritizing what needs to be updated now, prioritizing items that have come to the end of their useful life, like light bulbs and HVAC systems, and replacing them with energy-efficient alternatives. So by investing in energy efficiency improvements, we've seen cities across the nation quickly come closer to a clean energy future. The less energy we use, the less energy we need, the more money we save. And this alleviates our need for new power plants and saves the city tons of money. Next slide.
The first step that many cities have taken, Sarasota comes to mind, has been to examine their city codes for barriers to clean energy and energy efficiency. Red tape and disincentives that. I guarantee you'll find your fair share of. Council has great experience in engaging in this sort of review with staff. We should use LEED, Leadership in Energy and Environmental Design Standards, to invest in the most energy-efficient new buildings for the city possible, which will have a great payoff for taxpayers with lower energy consumption. This applies equally to any future water project we might choose to construct. Next slide, please.
And then there's financial incentives, such as rebates for renewable energy installations, tax credits, providing exemptions from property taxes, the zero-interest loans that can be repaid through tax assessments. These are all fast ways for cities to move these programs. Incentive programs can offer tiered incentives to support renewable energy for low-to-medium-income households and hope to get the community to our energy needs. One of the top things that cities have been doing to finance their programs is taking advantage of their energy savings through energy conservation savings reinvestment, which that means you take the savings from your energy efficiency upgrades, take a budget-neutral step to then fund future municipal and public energy programs. In addition, you can support and promote programs like the Solar Energy Loan Fund, or SELF, which gives low-income homeowners affordable pathways to energy upgrades. Establishing incentives helps residents and businesses to move quickly towards your goal so that then you can support those in the community who need extra help. And as always, we need to continue supporting net metering for those who have already made the transition to solar. Next slide, please. And then there's public worker options, increasing the amount of options for those who already work for the city. So the city can lead on moving to 100% by empowering municipal workers to be at the forefront of this transition. By putting the energy transition management in the hands of our very capable municipal staff, we will be leaps and bounds ahead. Not only can the city save on municipal and public contracts for materials, we can train our staff to be experts on energy efficiency and renewable standards. In fact, Whit Reamer's office has told us that they already see all sectors of municipal government engaging in this process and prioritizing a sustainable future in their day-to-day work. As a community, we can make this happen. Next slide, please.
This city, this mayor, knows how to communicate with residents and visitors. It's one reason why we get big events like Super Bowl. But we can partner with TECO to educate folks just as well on how to save energy and generate it cleanly. We understand we have a shortage of skilled labor here in Tampa for today's solar jobs. As we ramp up solar installation, we're experiencing a big boost in jobs that pay very well for people without college degrees if we support training at our VoTEC schools and places like IBW. And we could encourage TECO to incentivize those who can choose clean energy over coal and gas. Next slide, please.
And then you can help the city to lead by example. Through partnering with TECO, as an investor-owned utility, TECO has the option to go above and beyond. And they've already committed to some great initiatives. But together, you can pair with TECO on high-visibility, clean-energy demonstration projects, like rooftop solar and initiative programs for ratepayers. The city needs to lead in showing that you yourselves are investing in renewable energy for city buildings and operations. And additionally, I know that the Sustainability Office and TECO have been looking at ways to identify and procure leasing of public property and buildings where we can generate renewable energy. So by establishing a city utility partnership, we can share in decision-making to make the best investments community-wide and lead the community into the future. Next slide, please.
And finally, we should recognize that, we've talked a lot about TECO, right? Our tailpipes are our main source of carbon emissions and the smog that makes it tougher here for kids with asthma and seniors with COPD than in any other county in Florida. It's why we get an F every year from the American Lung Association for having Florida's worst smog. We are thrilled that Mayor Castor has committed to the city, doing its part, and will soon, by moving to an all-electric fleet, even electric garbage trucks. Hart will soon have its first electric buses, and we can encourage them to follow Mayor Castor's lead in this commitment. We'll find that not only is our air cleaner, our streets are quieter, and our taxes are lower with the substantial savings in fuel and maintenance that come with any EV. Sierra Club partners with TECO and our other utilities in the Drive Electric Florida Coalition to work for access to EV charging for everyone, not just in our business districts. And the city, which is the newest member of the Drive Electric Florida Coalition, can now work with the state's experts to do that here. Next slide.
Okay, and as we said, we know you're already doing many of these things, and thank you for that. But you've already put the City of Tampa and city council in the unique position to be a leader on these initiatives. Thank you so much for your time, and please let us know if we can provide any further resources. Like I said, the handout has a bunch of different things you can go to. I also emailed it, so you don't have to write out those links. You can just click on them. And we would love to take any questions you have at this time.
Thank you very much. Before I go to Councilman Citro, I know he wanted to speak now at the end of the presentation. You said, or you used the most important word, and that's partnership. Partnership with the city, partnership with TECO, partnership with the Sierra Club. You're out on the ground. You understand these issues. We've seen this by your presentation. We know you. You're respected in the community. But by creating and building upon these partnerships, we can set an example to the rest of the country. You know, we're known as the Sunshine State, but we're not really embracing solar. We're moving towards that, but we're not embracing it. We look at automobile manufacturing and how electric cars, which we thought, many of us thought, you know, they'll never get off the ground. You know, I had referenced Back to the Future earlier, and I said by 2015, we'd have flying cars. Well, we're not there yet, but the electric vehicles are there. I mean, you see with the amount of Teslas on the road, the Nissan Leaf, the Chevy Volt. BMW has electric vehicles. So the individual is moving towards that because they see not just the benefit to the environment, but the benefit to their wallets, saving money on gas, reducing fossil fuel usage, reducing the emissions. But going back to what I said at the beginning, partnerships, working together. You don't need to see the city as the enemy, TECO as the enemy, the Sierra Club as the enemy. We have to see each other as partners and moving forward because that is, this is our planet. It's going to benefit all of us. We all win. A rising tide lifts all boats, and that's the important part here. And I appreciate this presentation very much. You hit on many, many things. Things that we're doing and things that we can do, but again, working together. Councilman Citro?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You just cut, you just cut my statements in half. I thank you. I have before me an ecology flag, and I am now in full circle. Back in the early '70s, I was in the Chicago River, cleaning it up, wearing this, a patch on my jacket. Now, I've come to realize that this is the way that Tampa needs to go. I was apprehensive at first, I have to tell you, Brooke and Phil. But when, we all have an ignorance, and what we don't know, we don't know. And with the help of my legislative aide, Tim Heberlein, and people like Nicholas Glover, that have gone to the chamber and connected me with some of these larger corporations, and talking with them, and them seeing their heads going, yeah, you're right. You're right. Technology is moving so quickly. If we took the distance from here to McHale Air Force Base is the time that humans have been on this planet, the last inch would have been from the Wright Brothers to landing on the moon. Our technology is going to double and going to change within the next 10 years so quickly and so rapidly that fossil fuels will be way behind us. This is our chance as a city to be the leader, not only in the state, but in the country and the world. There will be side effects from this, and those side effects will be affordable housing. Case in point, I just remodeled my whole condo, and some of you may have followed me on Facebook. And something as simply as putting in LED lights and Energy Star appliances, I've cut my bill by two-thirds. So if we can get the people that are paying one-third the amount of their rent and knock that down, yes, then we are talking truly affordable housing. I applaud Councilman Miranda, who is one of the most energy-efficient people I know of by the vehicle he drives and the things that he does. And again, it's ignorance, and it's not a bad ignorance. What we don't know, we don't know. And if we can send this message to everybody in, not only in Tampa, but the Tampa Bay area, we will have a cleaner environment. We will be living cheaper. We will be having more high-paid careers, not jobs, careers in this area. Careers that will last for the next 20, 25 years. Mr. Chair, I thank you for the opportunity to speak. Brooke and Phil, thank you for being here today. Let's work not, it's no longer an aspiration. It's a goal. And I want to thank my fellow councilmen, and I hope when this comes back sooner than March, that it will be a seven-zero vote on this resolution to move this city forward. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Councilman Miranda?
Thank you, Chairman. There are things that are happening in this world now that really were happening in the world back in 1900. Before the gas engine, there was electric cars. No one remembers that, not even I, who's 160 years old. But when you look at things, what's happening is that what comes around, goes around, and comes back a little better. What happened is that the environment was so much bombarded by fossil fuels and other chemicals that we've gotten ourselves, created a situation where we can't even sustain life as we knew it sometime back in the '40s and the '30s. You have vehicles that are coming out in the trucking engines, Rivlin, the Badger, the Hummer, semis from Tesla that are electric, semis from another company that I forget their name was also. But there's something that I think is going to be in the next few years, much bigger even than electric cars. And that's called blue gas. I'm sure you know what that is. That's hydrogen. It's my understanding that the hydrogen trucks that will be in production, I think, in the next five or eight years or 10 years at most, can go 900 miles on a charge. What's holding back the hydrogen? What's holding back the hydrogen phenomenon from taking over the electric, that it costs a little bit more money to produce hydrogen now, as we know, even though there's a lot of abundance, but to transform it into automobiles and trucks and so forth. But sooner or later, that gap will also come down to the same thing as the electric cars have. And it doesn't take 20 minutes or 30 minutes, or it takes seconds to fill up a semi with hydrogen that can go 900 miles. And why are they doing semis and not trucks in the beginning? Well, trucks usually run from A to B and back from B to A. They have distance that they have routes that they go on, and that's exactly what they travel. So it would be smarter for them to do something to go from A to B and B to A back than to have many, many stations that you have to put the money into to charge a vehicle. And that's what's going to start the revolution of another revolution. The electric cars will be in use. In fact, Chevrolet, I saw a commercial the other day that said that Chevrolet's working on how many new vehicles, and I would imagine Chevy, Ford, all of the carmakers are going to have 80%. They say, I say in 10 years, they're going to cut that from 20 to 10. And I really believe that. But I also believe that hydrogen will be the factor, and robotics. Robotics is a thing that America is way behind from the Asian world. Japan and China have 15, 20 years ahead of us in robotics. We will catch up, and we talked about, you saw a truck from the solid waste department or one like it. And in the near future, you're going to see those trucks run with either electric or hydrogen with no driver. And guess what else you're going to see? You will see your garbage can roll itself out to the, where it's picked up, and you'll see no one touching anything. That's what's coming. I may not see it, but I can tell you that it's right around the corner. And I've never invested in stocks, and if I was a stockbroker, I'd tell you to invest in blue gas and robotics. And I admire the Sierra Club, I like to, however, I want, what was it Kennedy said? Don't ask what your country can do for you, ask what you can do for your country. So I'm asking you to tell us what you're doing yourselves to make this world better, and what you're investing in yourselves, what kind of cars you drive. I want that. I'm not trying to be hard on anybody, but if you're going to lead, you got to show the example, what they want people to follow. And that's your responsibility, as it is our seventh. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Mr. Chairman, I had a quick question to follow up. Phil?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry.
That's fine.
Thank you. The, it speaks to 2030 as a goal, and obviously, that's still a ways off. But it's, and you and I, I think we've talked about this as well, as I've talked to some other people. Some people are concerned that's an overly aggressive goal and more aggressive than other cities are taking on. And I think even you referenced Atlanta is 2035. Can you give us a minute on why you chose 2030 as opposed to the goals that other municipalities are choosing?
Yeah, this whole national movement goes back four years, over four years, started in St. Petersburg, among other places. And at that time, the hardware was not as efficient. You know, now solar panels are much more effective, doesn't take as many as it used to, and we have something that we didn't have back then, we have battery storage. So that's why TECO frankly surprised us all, impressed us all by saying that they'll be at 22% solar in 2023. So if you extrapolate that and make the choices that we can make with energy efficiency, we can get there much sooner than anyone could imagine. And again, several years ago, two, three years ago, people would not have thought that that was possible. But now we are seeing more cities. There are actually over 50 cities in the United States that are already at 100%. And in Utah, which is not what you would think is necessarily a progressive state, there are 23 cities with the same goal, 100% by 2030. So it's happening, and more and more cities are moving in that direction very quickly because we can do more. And the great thing is, at the time that we realized that we have to move more quickly than we ever imagined, we learned that, oh, we have all the tools that we need, right here.
If I could piggyback on that?
Please.
Additionally, Tampa is unique in that we are at one of the highest risks of the impacts from climate change and sea level rise. We also have the means to move more quickly. You look at a city like Atlanta, they have the busiest airport in the country and 1.6 million people, and they have a 2035 goal. With 400,000 residents, Tampa can exceed that. Additionally, we have the political climate now to make this happen. We're going to get funding from the federal government. They already have a plan nationally by 2035, and to offer money to cities making this transition. In fact, yesterday, on a virtual town hall, Representative US, excuse me, US Representative Kathy Castor, who leads the Select Committee on the Climate Crisis, when she was asked about her goals, she said that they're currently on the path to get there by 2040. Biden has made a commitment to 2035, but she really thinks it should be 2030. So when you have people like that leading on the national level, we're able to do it here in Tampa, and we've already taken, you have already taken so many steps to make that happen.
Thank you.
Let me, Mr. David?
Councilman Goode, Councilman Carlson.
Is TECO and the other companies on board with this 2030 idea? Because I hear a lot saying that they don't think they can be ready by 2030. So have we talked with them and had collaboration to see where they're at? Because I hear some say maybe 2035, maybe, but 2040 might be a stretch. Elaborate on that if you can.
Well, we have been, we've had conversations with TECO. We haven't had a one-on-one. We've been collaborating with our friend Nicholas Glover from the Chamber, and we'll be speaking with the Chamber, as you had requested at our last meeting together, next Tuesday. And so we'll be happy to report back from that, what the conversations are that we have, the agreements we can come to. The truth of the matter is, we're in a climate crisis, and partnership is key. And sometimes we have to put these aggressive goals into place and then find a way for all of us to partner and work together. It is important that we move quickly and rapidly because otherwise, we're going to have irreversible damage and not be able to sustain life on this planet.
If I could add to that, sir, Councilman Goode. This isn't well-known, but TECO, a few weeks ago, filed an intent with the Public Service Commission to close one of their two remaining coal plants by 2023. So we definitely see that as progress, plus they're very aggressive, much more aggressive than any other utility in the state. They deserve a lot of credit for ramping up their solar. They haven't announced what their plans are after 2023, but if you were to do a straight-line projection, it takes us to 100%. So it's a conversation that we need to have and need to continue to have in the community here.
Thank you, sir.
Great question.
Councilman Carlson.
I just want to quickly say thank you to both of you for your leadership, your vision and your persistence. And I know that you all represent, you're representing, I think, four groups here today, and collectively, you all have hundreds, if not thousands, of supporters and volunteers and donors throughout our region. So I want to give a thanks to them also for all their efforts. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, thanks for coming. We appreciate it very much. Next up is item four, FDOT. Do we have, who do we have from FDOT here today?
Are they on the line, maybe?
Is F dot virtual?
Chair, that item is after public comments.
Good morning, Council. This is Vic Beedey. Good morning, Council. This is Vic Beedey. I just wanted to open up and introduce Ginger, the FDOT presenter.
All right, thank you very much.
Earlier last year, Council had requested that FDOT come in and present their various activities and projects within the city of Tampa. And this is part of that presentation, and we have Ginger Regaldo, who is the manager of their walk-bike program for District Seven, and she will present as our state partner on some activities and projects that are going on within the city, and these are state projects. So at this point, I will hand it over to Ginger. Take it away. Thanks.
All right, Ginger, you have now your 10-minute presentation. Go ahead.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you, Vic, for that introduction. I hope you're all doing well and Happy New Year. My presentation going to be put up? There it is. As Vic said, I am the bicyclist and pedestrian program manager for the Department of Transportation, Traffic Ops, and I'll try and move through this as quickly as possible. So, next slide. So the Department of Transportation conducted a pedestrian safety and road safety audit study along Busch Boulevard, and part of that that we conducted allowed us to determine the locations for the four pedestrian hybrid beacons that we placed along the corridor. And part of the study that we did allowed us to pick our walk-bike drive initiative and allowed us to do the education campaign in conjunction with CUTTER, or the Center for Urban Transportation, as most people know it. Next slide. So here is a map of the corridor that we used, and we determined the four locations using the CDMS system or the crash management system. And we determined that the four locations that we were going to put the pedestrian hybrid beacons were North 12th Street, North Brook Street, North Pawnee Avenue, and Overlook Drive. Part of the neighborhoods that are in this area are South of Springs, University Square, Terrace Park, and Temple Crest. And these are covered by Councilman Goode, which is District Five, and Councilmember Viera, which is District Seven. And we used these, the CDMS system to determine the high-crash areas, and we also determined what were the draws for pedestrians and bicyclists. And that's how we determined where we were going to put pedestrian hybrid beacons. Next slide. So when we're doing our education and outreach, we not only want to reach the motorists, we want to reach the pedestrians, bicyclists, the residents, the people traveling through the area, and we want to work in conjunction with the businesses in the area. It's highly important that we do this education as holistically as possible, and we thought we did a pretty good job with that. Next slide. We did it in two phases. We did it as part of the actual work zone when the construction was taking place, and we sent out oversized flyers. We did it in English and in Spanish. And we had the flyers that looked similar to this. And we had it where we told them to take quizzes on the back, and we put them into businesses out there, working in conjunction with the businesses, and got them working with us, which was important to involve everybody in the neighborhoods. Next slide. We also put up billboards. I know it seems kind of old-school, but they're highly effective and worked really well for us. So this also happens to be move-over month, just a quick plug for that. But we were using the billboards to draw people's attention, and we replicated this because we did it in Pinellas County, and it was effective over there. So we used three billboards for the work zones along Busch Boulevard, and then we went from the work zone to the actual pedestrian hybrid beacon billboards. Next slide. So as you can see, we showed exactly what the pedestrian hybrid beacons were going to look like, and they were really good-looking billboards, if I do say so myself. So the first thing that we did was we created a PSA using one of the engineers that we had here at DOT, and he, Chris Craig Fox, talked about the work zone and what it was going to do with the pedestrian hybrid beacons, and we rolled that out. And now we actually have two new PSAs that we're going to use, and this is the first time that we're showing them, so you get to be the brand reveal of that. The first one is from a female engineer here, Anita, and it's from the motorist's point of view. And the second one is from our new chair of the BikeWalk Tampa Bay group. Everybody should recognize him, Dave Andrichuk, from the Tampa Bay Lightning. And it's from the pedestrian point of view. So I'm going to take a few moments to show you both of these real quick. Next slide. If you can play this first video. You just tap it, and it'll, the bar will come up at the bottom.
Hi, I'm Anita Montroy with the Florida Department of Transportation. We are installing new crosswalks equipped with pedestrian hybrid beacons on major roadways in the Tampa Bay region. These beacons are proven to reduce crashes between motorists and pedestrians. What should motorists do when they encounter one of these beacons? When the beacon is dark, proceed like normal. When the beacon is yellow, or person has activated the crosswalk, slow down and prepare to stop. When the beacon is solid red, come to a complete stop. When the beacons flash a red, check to see if anyone is still crossing. If the crossing is clear, proceed with caution. When used properly, these beacons help motorists see pedestrians and help pedestrians cross the road safely.
You go to the next slide, if you could show that one too, please. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Dave Andrichuk, Chair of BikeWalk Tampa Bay. The Florida Department of Transportation is installing pedestrian hybrid beacons on busy roadways to help make crossing easier for pedestrians. When crossing the road, first, press the button to activate the crosswalk beacon. Wait for the walk signal, make sure all traffic is stopped, then begin crossing the road. If the signal is counting down, there isn't enough time to cross safely. Press the button and wait for the next light cycle. We all play a part in making our roads safe for everyone.
So I'm going to use this opportunity to shamelessly ask that the city put these up on their website so that we can push this education effort out more. Because the more opportunity that we have for people to see it, the greater the spread of education goes. It's important that we get that out to everybody. The department is proud of the fact that we have 11 PHBs throughout the county right now. We have the four on Busch Boulevard, three currently on Hillsborough Avenue, one on Florida Avenue, and three on Park Boulevard. We have one coming to Kennedy Boulevard, and there's another one coming to Hillsborough Avenue. So back to the education efforts. Next slide. So how did we do it? We used geofencing, which allowed us to have the cars that were traveling through the area, the message was tailored to them specifically. And when they would actually stop, because we didn't want to encourage any distracted driving by any stretch of the imagination, the messages could be reviewed on their device when they were stopped, and it would encourage them to take the quiz. As you can see, we had more than 2 million impressions with 8,000 clicks, which is very, very good. Next slide. So what did this do for us? This gave us over 4,000 links, and 1,700 people that took the quiz, spending five to seven minutes actually taking the quiz. And that's important. We had 88,000 people that went and looked at it, and that was on Facebook, and we had over 2,896 that were on Instagram. And our actual timeframe was from just October 16th, and it's going to end at the end of this month. That's a lot in such a short period of time of having it out there to the public. And some of the quotes that we received from people, next slide. Please. So if you look at it, it's important because they said they love these new lights, it's safe for walker, clear indication for drivers, and hopefully, it makes the streets safe. They're glad they're doing this because people don't understand, and a lot of people haven't seen it. If you look at the one, please continue to do promoting these signals. The first time I saw one a couple of years ago in St. Pete, it caught me by complete surprise, and I had to guess how it worked. That's important that we hear this kind of feedback from the public, and we know that we're doing the right thing and doing safety and improving it for our citizens. Part of the other things that we are doing is we're taking the feedback and we're seeing how we can continue to improve. So far, we've received 182, all of which is not always complimentary, but we do take what is, you know, not so complimentary and see how we can improve it. That's what you should always do, take that feedback and try and improve. Next slide. So what do we do with our on-the-street education? When we're out there, we work with the public, and we try and talk to them about how they should safely use the crosswalk, the pedestrian hybrid beacons, and we give them the safety bags, as you see, that have the retro-reflective straps. We give them the tip cards and tell them how to use. We give them the tip cards and tell them how to use it. We give bike lights out so that they're always crossing safely. We want to make sure that we're giving the information and talking to them and encouraging them to do the right thing and answering any questions that they might have. Next slide. One of the other efforts that we did is we worked in conjunction with the Tampa Police Department and Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office on speed enforcement. Cannot, cannot under, underplay how much we work with and appreciate our law enforcement officers and how much they do to educate the public. I don't think people understand how much they do and the role that they play in the safety of our citizens. While they're out there, they stop not just the motorists, but bicyclists and the pedestrians as well. And they work to educate the passing out the materials that you see here on the slides and on the next slide that you're going to see as well. And they give them the tip card that I've been showing, but they also give the lens cloths that have the message on it as well. And that works to to enhance people's memory and tell them why it's important to do the right thing for their safety and for everybody else's safety as well. Law enforcement aren't out there to just give citations, they're out there to save lives and that's their goal is education. So we can't do the things we do without our law enforcement partners at TPD and the Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office as well. Next slide. So we have the lens cloth that we've been giving out and we do pop up education and we work again in cooperation with TPD and Hillsborough County SO. And we hand out these informations and we've given out to date, I want to tell you, it was like over 8,000. Next slide. So that you can see them, they're highly popular, people like them, they get them as well when they turn in the quizzes and they do the quiz and they have the option to have it mailed to them. Next slide. So on December 2nd, we had a media event to announce the new PHBs had been activated and we encouraged the media to attend and come. And we had a really large turnout. We had Temple Terrace Police there, we had the mayor there from Temple Terrace, we had Hillsborough County Sheriff's Department, the Temple Terrace, TPD, police were also there to support the event. And we had citizens that came and gathered as well. Next slide. And this is the coverage that we received. If you play that.
Today, the Florida Department of Transportation unveiled the next level of pedestrian safety. It's called a Hawk Beacon.
So we're putting them in areas where we know there are people crossing, but also far enough between the signals that it provides another opportunity beyond the signal.
Okay, here's how it works. Just as with any crosswalk, a person first hits the crossing button. But unlike a standard crosswalk, there isn't a traffic light here, so there's not a wait for the signal to change. And much like the flashing amber beacons, there's no lag time between when the pedestrian pushes the button and drivers are alerted when someone wants to use the crosswalk.
So here's the difference between these new Hawk beacons on Bush Boulevard and the amber beacons you may be used to see. These have a red face, traffic has to come to stop.
And Tampa Police Officer Roy Paz tells me educating the public on how to navigate this new crosswalk is high on their priority list.
We're trying to get the word out as much as possible and FDOT is absolutely fantastic. They give us a lot of literature to hand out to people. So when we're out and about, we're doing our pedestrian enforcement, we do hand these things out to folks.
Secretary Gwynne says the amber flashing beacons work very well with smaller roadways, but with six lanes, Bush Boulevard needed the next level of pedestrian protection.
And this will give the pedestrian full protection just as if they were at a regular traffic.
This one is on Bush Boulevard and Overlook Drive just west of the light at 56th Street. But you can expect to see more of these on many of our busiest corridors. In Tampa, Jack has its spectrum, they do so.
All right, thank you very much. How much, how many more slides do you have to go?
I'm done. I just wanted to say thank you for your time and if you have any questions, please.
Thank you very much. Councilman Vieira, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just very briefly, first, I wanted to say Officer Roy Paz, who was there with City of Tampa Police Department, is the nicest person you'll ever see. He's just such a, he is such a nice gentleman and I, and I know we all love him a great deal. He's a very nice gentleman. Just a couple of really quick things. I wanted to thank FDOT, Secretary Gwynne and everybody for your emphasis on, on, on Bush Boulevard. It's an area of great concern that doesn't get enough attention. I think that the lives lost and the tragedies that we see on Bush Boulevard need a great deal more deference. And so I really appreciate what y'all have been doing since certainly since I've been in office. You guys have been a great partner, I think, in improving that. One of the things that I'm, you know, looking forward to and hoping that we can build the momentum to is to get a lower speed limit on Bush Boulevard to eventually get the design so that we can get a lower speed limit. I see Vic Bead there with the City of Tampa nodding his head and Vic, thank you for your work. You're such a, always such a nice gentleman. So that's certainly one thing that I would love to see us working towards. I know that when about a year ago, we had the tragedy, it could have been a prospectively much bigger tragedy, over at Mel's Hot Dogs, we had Mel Lone, a great guy and a constituent and just one of my favorite people, come and talk to us on that. And so I hope that we continue to see work, ma'am, in that regard. Something else I'd encourage y'all to do is, is to continue to work with advocates in the Bush community, including my friend Valerie Jones, who lost her daughter Alexis Miranda, who was a Chamberlain student and while crossing West Bush to get to Chamberlain, was hit by a vehicle and she lost her life. I believe if memory serves me right, she was 16 years old. And Valerie is just a really wonderful person who's had an extraordinary journey in life and taken some of the worst hits in life. But you know, the number one thing that y'all are doing, I think by giving this emphasis to Bush Boulevard, is to allow the voices that are there to be heard and allow people to frankly out there get the respect that they deserve. So I just really, really wanted to thank you for that. And then I guess the elephant in the room, which we're all frustrated by, is that some were out there and some huge wallet is half a billion dollars in offer transportation money, which we're all just waiting on one way or another. And so that's kind of the elephant in the room. But again, I just wanted to thank you guys at FDOT for your emphasis on Bush Boulevard and I really look forward to where we can, you know, set, set the design in the past so that we can get a lower speed limit. Because I think we all agree that that's going to save lives. But I just wanted to thank you and Secretary Gwynne and Mr. Bead and everybody else for your hard work. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Councilman Citro.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much for the presentation today. I'm wondering if the next time that you appear before I say that you're going to give us another presentation, if you could check on stats as far as accidents, whether it be pedestrians, bikes or crashes, the concern right turns on red. And if we can, and bring down those, those statistics by turning more and more streets without right turn on red. Okay, thank you, Vic. Thank you very much, Vic.
Councilman Miranda.
Thank you, Chairman. You know, most human beings are creatures of habit and what does that have to do with transportation? Well, when you get to a traffic centralization and you're looking for the one that says walk or stop and you see 18, 17, 20, 16, they're so small and they're red and black, you can't hardly tell the difference. And I have 20/20 vision with or without glasses. The reason I wear glasses is only because I was too cheap to spend $3,000 an eye, so I didn't, I didn't have to read up close and I wasn't going to spend $6,000 just not to have glasses. So those signalizations throughout the city, in some areas, you see it goes to zero and it gives you five seconds to drive through. And you have others, a block or two blocks away, that when it goes to zero, it turns either red or green. So why is that? And why is it that we don't have those signalizations? There's third world countries that I've been in, I'm sure Mr. Carlson more likely has been to some others that have the same thing, that are twice or three times the size and they're white and blue, blue background with white. You can see them at day and at night. Where these are so small, it's like digital things and you have to really look at them, is it at 16 or at 6? Is it at 11 or 1? It's just very hard to see. And I like what Mr. Citro said, next time you come up, give me an answer. I'm not asking it today or something, but give us an answer as to why they were set up in different modes, why some change as soon as they hit zero and others wait five seconds. So when you mentally see it, you think that you're going to have five seconds to cross and you make a mistake and guess what? There's a fatality possibly can happen. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Councilman Carlson.
I'll be happy to follow up with you on that.
Councilman Carlson.
Yeah, I just want to ask a quick question. Councilman Miranda just reminded me, an international question that I always have is when traffic backs up at different places, when there's heavy traffic, people often will pull into the intersection and then that'll block the traffic going the other direction. And the British system, I think the European system was used mostly around the world, there's a box that has an X in it and you can get a ticket if you, if you, if you stop in the, in the intersection. Why is it that we don't use that in Florida and the United States? Anybody know? It seems like that would alleviate a lot of the traffic problems when, when there's congestion.
So if I could address that real quick, though, we follow primarily national standards and guidelines set forth by the Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices. Part of the reason we follow this national standard and guideline is to have consistency in signage, operation and messaging across all 50 states. And that is the commitment that the state and the city and a lot of local governments make to following in terms of the standard. So currently, the way we operate our signalized intersections are subject to those standards and as they get updated, we conform to them. So that, that's really the gist of the standards that we have to follow. And as far as the pedestrian signal timings and how they work, they're really meant for pedestrians only, the queues are not for drivers. Although it is understood that drivers also follow those queues, but there's a reason why we may have, you know, continuance of a vehicle phase after a pedestrian phase, especially if you have a lot of right turns like at Florida and Kennedy. So I'll follow up on details on that with Councilman Miranda, but broadly, it's the standards that we follow for consistency nationwide.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone. All right, let's go to public comment. If there's anybody here that wishes to speak in person here in the audience for public comment, you have three minutes to speak. Anybody here in the audience that wishes to speak, you have three minutes. Please approach the lectern and we'll start your time.
Greetings, everyone. My name is Your Highness Tafara. Of course, spoke at a meeting, city council meeting of the summer and you may recognize me, of course, in the last meeting, December 17th, of course. So just following back up from that interaction, of course, several of you all spoke and, you know, heard the voice that I was coming from, just seeking some assistance in the city of trying to get people together, like I said, to initialize that, that honest, that open, that transparent dialogue. So one thing I just noticed in just listening to everybody actually so far in the meeting in regards to different programs and different initiatives that are made with renewable energy, the transportation, of course, the walk, ride safely, stuff like that. I'm just taking some notes and I just wanted to go over a few things, just correlation and reference to what the angle I'm coming from and what I'm seeking assistance on. Like I said, several programs, narratives presented that seems to be a help to the city. And I'm asking, I'm thinking, sitting in my seat, you know, where's that enthusiasm, that assistance, that organization in regards to what people like, what I represent, like I said last time, the downtrodden disenfranchised communities of the city and particularly black people. But there's a lot of people that feel the same way I feel even outside of black people. You know, I'm just like, where's that initiative? Where's that enthusiasm with? Of course, look at, look, look, look at what occurred last week in DC, you know, with the riots that went on in the Capitol. To me, what that represents is just a blatant disregard of people not being to get out what they truly feel on the inside. Regardless of right or wrong, you know, throwing out the subjectivity of this, of the judgment of it, because a lot of people want to say they're right and they're wrong. Obviously, some people are feeling a certain way and there's millions of people that are feeling certain ways. But just for the, the simple lack of effort that's being made, publicized on programs to get people together to see what's really going on in here, what's really going on in here. So you've got things like that that's bubbling over and you have issues and instances like that will happen in DC. Like I said, you can analyze it from many different angles, but what I see in a simple way is just that people feel a certain way, they're thinking certain things and they feel like they're not being heard. Excuse me. So you have people that just take to the streets and start doing certain things and you've got people that were killed, you've got lives that were ruined, you know, and so on. So there's just a reflection, like I said, again, that people are just pinning up a lot of these things inside, it's not coming out. Also, we all know why, you know, some things don't happen in this country, it's the nature of capitalism. It's just pretty much if no capital game can be perceived to be made, the action shows pretty much that no one cares. And it's sad, it has to be tied into a dollar amount to get motivation, but that's just the way that we've adapted and the customs traditions that we grew up in and it's just the ways of the world and the society, what we're doing right now. Also, listening to what some people said, actually, I saw, heard a narrative, the chance to be a leader in the state, the nation and the world, we're talking to Tampa, in regards to renewable energy. That same narrative is what I'm pushing as far as getting people together. We have a chance to be a leader in the state and the world and in the city, you know, around this, to bring people together and say, look, look at what we're doing because it's no constructive effort, which I'm publicly seeing on a large scale, across the city, across the state and across the nation. I also heard a line, it's no longer an aspiration, it's a goal. Actually, you actually mentioned that with the energy. And I'm like, I'm feeling the same way about, we need to get what we got to get out in the outside, out in the open, so we can kind of come to a better resolution of these problems that people are exhibiting. Also, just to wrap it up, I want to actually say, give thanks to Mr. Carlson. I did actually have a meeting scheduled, January 27th, we have, and also Mr. Louis Vieira, my representative, reached out to actually me and to try to schedule something and I noticed that, I wanted to actually ask on a weekend, she said you travel a lot, but we actually run the program on the weekends. So I want to ask to see if I can speak with you directly instead of speaking with somebody in between to try to line that up. Just to sum it all up, I know my time has ran, I do appreciate the effort that's been made and reached out to me so far, so it does give me hope. And also, Mr. Goody, I reached out to your office in regards to Janelle McGregor, which you mentioned last time, I never got a return or answer back, you know, so.
I'm sure she's listening, I'm sure we'll get back to you right away. Okay. You may in my office again and I'll make sure that happens, okay, sir?
Okay. And like I said, give thanks again for hearing me out. I just need some help, I need some assistance. I'm not doing this for personal gain because there's a problem in the country, there's a problem in the city. People got to get out what, get out what they feel on the inside and out in the open and it's going to be tremendous strides for each one of you individually, for the city and for us together. Please consider this, give me assistance, I'm putting forth my efforts, meet me halfway, let's speak about this and let's push this forward.
Thank you very much. Mr. Daniels.
I'm glad to be here.
Your name for the record.
Oh, I thought y'all know me, but my name is Clay Daniels. I live at 3708 East North Bay, Tampa, Florida. You know, I was, we, we talk about this loud music and it's, it, what we don't realize is environmental problem. I hear these people's talking earlier about environment, what goes up must come down. And this loud music, it's, it's, it's environmental problem, it's detrimental to our society, just like the noise is very annoying. I talked with Chief Bennett, the chief of staff, men, many chiefs have a good relationship, he always come by the house. And we was talking this morning and we was, came up with different ideas and I told them, I said, this is a good idea. We get a grant from the Justice Department and have two police officers work night and day just on the loud music. That was, you know, congested. We came up with that. Because what I was looking at, when I went to get my shot at St. Joseph Church the other day for this virus, it was like, and I don't want to, you know, I don't want to lie, but I think it was about 13 to 14 police is there. And I, and I came up with the idea. I said, we got these many police is over here or more, we can get somebody, you know, two police off to work on the loud music problem. Get a grant and try it for about six months to a year. Get one at night and one in daylight, one in daytime to specialize in handling the noise problem, you know? And just, just try, you know? Just, just get a grant, try to get a loan from the Justice Department and see how it worked like a study. And it'd be successful, then we go from there. And I think y'all listen to me, I really do, I know y'all listen to me because I think we're going to get this thing rolling because Chief Bennett really cares about this problem just like y'all do. And I know y'all tired of me coming up here and I'm tired of coming. And you know, I want to get this thing over with, but I want it to be very successful. That's why I want y'all to get Judy Ellis to come in, the 25th, Norris Free Florida, she specializes in this. I think she can be very helpful to us. We need to bring in all the professionals and put this thing together so we don't make no mistakes. Because we did the same thing with Frank Rettich was city council, we went through this and we spent all this time and now we back to square one. The noise is bad and we, we just didn't get anything done. We need to get this thing done so people's going to continue to suffer. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Councilman Goode.
You know, Mr. Daniel, you know, I know you've been here a long time, sir, and thank you for your efforts. And jumping on yesterday, I had. you for your efforts. And gentlemen, yesterday, I had put in a complaint, seven my decisions about loud music at a couple establishments on Hillsborough during the evening time. And I just was happening to go pick up my laundry yesterday, and I saw the code enforcement gentleman who was going to deal with the complaint. It was ironic that we were there. He recognized me. And I said, well, you know, a lot of problems are happening in the evening time, and I know we don't have any code officers in the evening time. And he made reference to that code doesn't have any noise meters at all. And I thought that was kind of odd. So I'm probably gonna ask the code enforcement director if that's factual and true to get back. I think that's crazy if code doesn't have some of the tools. They have a complaint, they're setting up a unit, I mean, the police unit, if code is there with a meter. So I'm gonna put a memo out in reference to that. I thought it was very odd, but I like the idea what you're talking, Mr. Daniels, and maybe the chief of staff, we can look into that. Thank you, sir.
And we tried code enforcement. We were scared they was gonna get jumped on. That's why we wanted to bring law enforcement involved. When Mr. Reddick was City Council, we thought about that, and code enforcement said, well, you know, we don't think that'll be, you know, it'd be too much on us because people do get sometimes Nashed and want to fight. So that's why, you know, turned over to law enforcement. They thought about code enforcement.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else here in the public? Hearing none. We have, I believe, seven registered speakers at this time. If we'd like to go ahead with those that are registered virtually, we'll begin public comment there. You have three minutes to speak. Please state your name.
Yes, first we'll go to Jordina Yampolsky. Jordina, if you can hear me, please unmute yourself.
Hi, council members. Yeah, my name is Jordana Yampolsky. I'm a resident currently of Sulfur Springs, lifelong resident of Tampa. I know you guys have already approved this money to the Tampa Police Department for use of purchasing light bars for the cars and maintenance on those. And also, and that's a million and a half dollars, keep in mind, over two years, wow. And a hundred thousand dollars for night vision monoculars. Honestly, you guys come in here basically every two weeks and you allocate more money and you approve this and you hail the police officers for their for their public safety. And I just really wanted to come out today to point out how inflated this one hundred and seventy-six million dollar police budget is that you all unanimously approved, and just how frivolously it can be spent. All this money that could be spent on the community if you guys hadn't have approved it to go into the Tampa Police Department budget. I also like to take a second just to bring to you guys' attention the harassment and the targeting of our houseless community right now, especially with the Super Bowl a month away. The Tampa Police Department have been given a job to clean sweep them out of view, I guess, of the people coming into town. And it disturbs me and it disturbs a lot of people in the community who are trying to help these people. I guess I yield my time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Matthew Yampolsky. If you can hear me, please unmute yourself.
Yes, hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, just I'll keep it short and sweet. My name is Matt Yampolsky from the Party for Socialism Liberation. I just wanted to point out the fact and maybe give you guys an opportunity to give some commentary back about the harassment on the houseless community. There's actually like specifically, like, there was actually a notice posted at the intersection of Kennedy and, I believe, Morgan, but I'm not sure on the intersection exactly. But a lot of houses, of our houseless community friends kind of sleep there, and there's a notice there from the city saying for a seizure of their property within twenty-four eight hours or something like that. And it just like happens to be right across the street from a brand new luxury hotel that's like about to be finished for Super Bowl week. And it's just like really dirty what you guys are doing. Like, I know it's like not you guys specifically, like it's the cops, but it's the cops' budget that's approved by you guys. So, yeah, it is your, you guys' fault. And it's disgusting. You know what I mean? A hundred thousand dollars is going to night vision goggles for our cops. What do they need frigging night vision goggles for? Like, this is a joke. Like, I call you guys, we call you guys every frigging month, and you guys ignore us, and you guys are just totally cool with people literally starving and dying on the streets while we get night vision goggles and shit for these, for the cops. Pardon my French, I'm sorry. But like, honestly, you guys are a joke. Each and every one of you should be ashamed of yourselves. Like, not only that, like, so the houseless people are dying and being rounded up and thrown into jail. And then on top of that, you guys are responsible for the murders of Jonas Joseph and Dominique Mulkey. So like, you guys are murderers, you guys are sociopaths, apparently. I don't know. I don't know what you guys are, but you guys are a joke. I appreciate your service. I yield my time.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Carrie Wardino. If you can hear me, please unmute yourself. Mr. Carrie Wardino, please unmute yourself.
All right. I think he's having some technical issues. We'll move on to Mr. Joe Rutherford. If you can hear me, please unmute yourself. You have three minutes.
Go ahead.
Thank you for that, for the time. Council members, my name is Joe Rutherford. I am the CEO of Grace Point here in Tampa, on the corner of Twenty-second East Century. I was anxious to provide an update of what has really become a more of a community organization, a community initiative.
Hey, Joe, could you pick up, Joe, could you pick up your phone, maybe? Because it's very difficult to hear you.
Yeah, I don't have a phone turned on. I've only using the laptop. Do you think there is an echo?
No, it's very muffled when you speak.
Okay, is this any better?
It's kind of the same. It's slightly better, but not too much.
Is there a phone number to dial into?
We can understand you. Sorry, why don't you just go ahead with this? Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, well, the update is, we as a community of providers, really led by Gail Ryder with Bay Care, has really kind of hurt the cat, so to speak. Organizations involved include, of course, Grace Point, obviously, Bay Care, who's already doing a co-responder model with law enforcement in Pasco County. We have Daco at the table, of course, Grace Point, Northside Mental Health. We've had several meetings with TPD officers. The most recent one was on the twelfth, so two days ago. And so rather than any of us responding to the RFP, we said we need to further understand what the needs are in the city of Tampa. Progress is moving along well with that. We've identified, actually earlier this week, two components of the model. The first is going to be a co-responder or ride along with the clinical staff. The other would be care coordination. So for those individuals who need help, be it with housing or engaging those individuals medically or mental health or substance abuse wise, to have a period of time to work with those individuals in a care coordination model. Meeting wrapped up that TPD has put together, is putting together a map of where most of the calls originate from. We're gonna sync that up with the various provider locations. Our next meeting's going to be on January twenty-fifth. So the overall good news is, I think, will be presented eventually and recommended by TPD, it will be the outgrowth of a multiple agency meetings in coordination with Tampa Police. So the, I think the bad news is, we don't have the mall to present yet. The good news is, and again, I'll again give kudos to Gail Ryder and her leadership to Bay Care, but you do have your long-term community providers at the table working hand in glove with the TPD, put together something that is uniquely tailored for Tampa's needs. And I will, short of any questions, yield my time.
Thank you very much. We don't engage the public, but if you want to go ahead, sir?
No, just one thing that many people in the public have asked us to look into, mental health programs as alternatives to police engagement. Grace Point, known for a long time, already has an engagement program, but I met with, because I knew them already, I met with them recently, and I encourage folks in the community to meet with them to look at what they're doing. But I also asked them, based on community input, to look at the Kahoots program and see whatever other upgrades that we could do. And as he said, I don't know if everybody could hear, but they're working on trying to find, you know, partnership of collaboration of several different groups to try to solve the problems that the folks in the community have asked about. Also, Grace Point has built, I think it's two or three now, affordable housing complexes to try to solve the shortage we have to get people who are houseless into homes. So thank you to everyone who's supporting them. And if anybody has any questions, please contact them directly and let us know what you think.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Yes, next speaker is Carrie Wardino. If you can hear me, please unmute yourself. You have three minutes. Mr. Wardino, please unmute yourself.
Good morning, City Council members. My name is Carrie Wardino. I was born here in Tampa. I am accompanied by my wife, Sandra Wardino, who will be addressing the City Council today for me.
Hi, good morning. I would like to start by saying the induction of Section 316.126 to the Board of Statutes, the Move Over Law, is a great first step for recognizing wrecker or tow truck drivers and including them as emergency roadside vehicles, making them essential. My husband, Kerry, has been a wrecker operator for over thirty years in Hillsborough County, and today we would like to address the city code, which prohibits parking a commercial vehicle at a residential property. This has become a major issue for many wrecker operators, causing some to have to give up their desperately needed jobs due to the consequences of this code. Not all wrecker companies service the law enforcement rotation lists, however, those who do need immediate access to their trucks twenty-four seven. Kerry currently services five separate law enforcement agencies as a rotation wrecker driver. Wrecker operators on this list have thirty minutes only to arrive on scene for an accident or an impound or vehicle block in traffic. The tow truck operator basically has to have a special license, a public transportation license, that is required by law enforcement for rotation calls. They work closely with law enforcement, clearing roadways. The tow truck is pretty much the automotive ambulance. Unfortunately, the wording of this code lumps the wrecker or the tow truck in with vehicles such as an AC repair van or a neighborhood lawn maintenance truck. As a result, wrecker operators are subjected to continuous harassment by neighborhood code enforcement personnel. Now, they are doing their job, per the code, as it's written, which is why emergency vehicles such as a wrecker, as mentioned in the Move Over Law, should be exempt from this code. We are not asking you change the code, only to amend it, to add a provision authorizing rotation wreckers for law enforcement to be the exception, to no longer be considered the commercial vehicle category and be considered an emergency vehicle and be exempt from this code. Rotation wreckers work tirelessly in all weather conditions for our law enforcement, our city, our county. Please approve this amendment request. Make it easier for them to better serve us. Thank you. I appreciate your time and your consideration.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Chair, that would conclude our public comment portion. No other registered speakers are logged on at this time. And in addition, we do not have any recorded messages.
Thank you very much. We will continue with the agenda. Before we do, how about we break for lunch at twelve o'clock today? Agreed. Any objection? No? All right, we'll break for lunch at twelve and come back, let's say, at one fifteen or one thirty? One thirty. Okey-dokey. Item number five.
Mr. Chairman, is there a, this is a first reading on a legislative matter. Normally, there are no presentations for this.
Okay.
If there are any questions or staff is present.
Councilman Dingfelder.
I believe there may be a request of the administration to make some comments or to make a presentation.
We'll go to.
I see Ms. Feely and Ms. Wells on line.
Okay, we'll see. Kate Wells is on the line, as well as Abby Feely, and then we'll go to Councilman Dingfelder.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I'm pleased to read this ordinance for first reading. This is an amendment to our front porch ordinance, which encourages and incentivizes folks to build front porches on their new construction or to, when they're remodeling their home, to add front porches. And it allows, under certain circumstances, it allows them to go into the traditional front yard setback to do so. Staff has worked very closely with us and legal to get us to this point. So I'll be glad to read this for first reading.
Wait, wait, wait. Councilman Dingfelder, I believe there are PowerPoint presentations for item five and six. Is that correct? I see a memo from Ms. Feely. Do we have PowerPoints on these items?
Chairman Menendez, this is Abby Feely. We do not have, we do not have presentations on this. What I submitted with that memo was the resolution from the Planning Commission in support of both of these items, five and six.
Okay.
It just came to my attention a few days ago that somehow, over the time, and I've been away from the city, that presentations on these items have gone to second reading. Moving forward, and, you know, in cooperation with council, we will move the presentations back to the first reading to allow you the opportunity to ask questions and make modifications if necessary and avoid then any potential, because if you made a change at second reading, then it's got to go back to first reading. So we'll go ahead and modify that moving forward. But these are the two items that you workshop just recently with us in October. Then we had some additional discussions on them. And all modifications have been made, and those ordinances are before you today for first reading, and we would respect your, I'm sorry, we would request your approval to that this morning. If you do have any questions, both LaShawn Doc and myself are here, and Ms. Wells is on the line with us as well.
Any questions or comments from council members? If not, Councilman Dingfelder, you can go ahead.
It's like Miranda.
Councilman Carlson.
Yeah, I just want to thank Councilman Dingfelder for remembering this from when you were on council before and following up with it and fixing it. And it's a great idea. It's one that neighborhoods have been wanting, and it'll add to our social community, especially now that during COVID, people are realizing how important the areas around where they live. And thanks also to staff for researching and putting together.
Thank you very much, Councilman Miranda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want some clarity on one B and F, where it says, shall be allowed to encroach up to eight feet, established front yard. However, in no time may the front porch be less than five feet from the front property line. Well, what is the front property line from the front of the house? Is it twenty-five feet? The setback?
So it depends what zoning district you're in. That provision was actually addressing where we have front yard averaging. So where we have averaging in East Tampa and West Tampa, even though you have an RS fifty, which is a twenty-foot front yard.
All right, twenty.
You may be at eighteen feet because of the averaging. So eighteen, and then if you allow the eight feet, that gets you to ten feet. If an average is less than that, in order to be in concert with the building code, we wanted to allow nothing less than five. So on some of our averaging situations, that's where you would be getting down to the possibility of that five potentially existing. If your average was, you know, at ten feet and you allowed an eight-foot encroachment, you would only be down to two feet. We wanted to make sure, in concert with the building code, when you get past that five feet, you have to rate the wall differently when you're closer to the property line according to building code. So we just wanted to be consistent with that and not create any hardships for our residents.
I understand, but a layperson would not understand like myself. When you look at eight feet, no less than five feet, you start thinking, well, what's the setback? And then when you look at that, then the next question becomes, I certainly have supported this in the past and will continue. However, I don't want that front porch to become another part of the house as rental property or as another room. How can How can we draft it so that that does not happen?
It does not allow enclosure. That's back at the beginning. It must remain open on three sides. It may only be attached at the front facade of the structure.
So, then future councils and future administrations can adhere to that? And it will not change unless there's a public hearing or something?
Correct. It's in one A. It says that the porch is open all, on all sides.
All right.
So, it has to remain open and cannot be enclosed.
I just want to make sure when Abby Feely and the rest of us are retired at a young age, that that doesn't happen.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Councilman Dingfelder, go ahead, sir.
Okay. Ms. Miranda, and Mr. Carlson, and anybody else, good questions. Mr. Miranda, definitely, the original ordinance precluded the enclosure of these, and this amendment does likewise. Move the following ordinance for first reading consideration in regard to file number 2021-8, Chapter 27, An Ordinance of the City of Tampa, Florida relating to front porches in residential districts, making revisions to the City of Tampa Code of Ordinances, Chapter 27, Zoning and Land Development, Amending Section 27-159, permitting projections into required yards, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second for Councilman Gudes, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Item number six. Oh, go ahead, clerk.
Ding Felder?
Yes.
Gudes?
Yes.
Maniscalco?
Yes.
Viera? Citro?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously with Councilmember Viera being absent at vote. Second reading and adoption to be held on February fourth, 2021, at nine thirty AM.
Thank you very much. Item number six.
Item number six is also a tax amendment change. These were the modifications to the West Tampa overlay that were brought forth by the West Tampa CAC to update items within that. A full presentation on this would be at second reading, but we did just workshop this in full with you at the end of October.
Question.
Councilman Dingfelder.
Ms. Feely, I had asked you this question privately, but I wanted to ask it publicly and flesh it out a little bit more. In one provision of this change, it takes the required tree replacement down from four inches caliper to three inches caliper. And I was just curious, does our, does our normal code, is our normal code also three inches on replacement?
Standard code is actually two inches. The overlay and downtown, a couple of them have the larger caliper. I think what I have experienced in some of the projects I've worked on now before coming back, you know, you get to that four inch, the differential between a two inch and a four inch is substantial money, and a lot of times, there is not inventory available of the four inch because you're purchasing something for a replacement that has had to grow longer. So, I think the CAC, and I can't speak directly to that, but they were trying to, one, maintain having those more mature trees, but two, get back to something that was not as cost prohibitive. So, they were asking for the three inch, which is still more than code, but a little less than what they have right now in order to keep with the intent, but to achieve those cost savings.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Who would like to read this item?
Well, before we read, may I?
Yes, sir.
I just want to know the rate of success in planting, when you plant a two-inch, three, three-inch and a four-inch, what's the rate of life that that plant is going to, tree is going to grow to full maturity? In other words, is it going to live to be a big tree? And what's the cost between a two, three, and a four inch to buy?
I don't have the cost figures for you today. I can bring them to you on second reading. The sustainability of the tree is typically the same. However, our code does require that maintenance on the new plantings, per, for a six-month period, also allows additional watering during that time to allow for establishment of those newly planted trees. If the tree does not survive, the property owner does have the requirement to replace that tree in order to maintain their landscape commitment. So, but I can get you the numbers in relation to the cost from two to three to four.
Thank you very much, Ms. Feely. Mr. Chairman, I hate to ride this horse a little further, but a lot of, a lot of times we have that tree ordinance, a replacement value, and you put money into the replacement of tree funds. Why is it that, and I think now you can even ask, if a homeowner requires asking that tree to be planted, have we ever made any, any kind of a, an effort to make sure that the tree fund balances out with the money we have there? I know we asked for this in the past, and if, can we get some of these trees planted when some neighbors may not have the money to do so, and it's planted there with the money that's in the tree fund?
I don't know that the tree trust fund is allocated in that way. I would have to look back at that. I mean, having just completed my own home, we planted on site, and then we owed some additional inches. We planted them in the adjacent right-of-way, which code requires our neighbor just paid into the trust fund for nineteen trees.
Okay.
So, it is a different mechanism, but let me, I would like the opportunity to look into the trust fund and get you that information, but I don't believe it is utilized in a hardship mannerism in order for one neighbor to be, I know the end outcome is you want the trees.
I appreciate that very much, as you understand. We don't have a running total every day on what, how many trees do we have and how much we have. We don't have that running total, and I appreciate that. But maybe you can get between first and second reading. Thank you.
I can do that.
Thank you very much. Councilman Miranda, would you like to read this item?
Mr. Chairman, I'll read it. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Item number six, File Number 2021-8, Chapter 27, Order being presented for first reading consideration, Orders in the City of Tampa, Florida relating to the West Tampa Overlay District Development Design Standards, Making Revision to the City of Tampa Code of Ordinances, Chapter 27, Zoning and Land Development, Amending Section 27-241, West Tampa Overlay District Development Design Standards, Repeating All Ordinances or Parts of Ordinances in Conflict, Providing for Severability, Providing an Effective Date.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Miranda, second from Councilman Gudes, roll call, vote.
Ding Felder?
Yes.
Gudes?
Yes.
Maniscalco?
Yes.
Viera? Citro?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously with Councilmember Viera being absent at vote. Second reading and adoption to be held on February fourth, 2021, at nine thirty AM.
Thank you very much.
Can I say, also, this one, this one was a lot of work by staff also in engaging the public, and it's something that, that lots of neighborhoods and communities want. So, thank you also to staff and the community for their participation in it.
Thank you very much, sir. Next up, we have a Historic Preservation Property Tax Exemption Application, item number seven.
I don't believe there's a presentation on that that's normally down at the second reading, at public hearing.
All right, I saw Mr. Vila there. This is for a building at seventeen fifteen East Columbus Drive. Do you have any questions or comments from council members?
There's Mr. Vila.
Mr. Vila, which building is this?
This was a building that was relocated as part of the widening of I-4. It was a joint effort by FDOT and the City of Tampa, and it was moved from Fourteenth Avenue to Columbus Drive. It's part of the design styles overall, master plan concept for Ebor City. They have relocated, I'd say, probably twenty architects to the building, and then they annexed this building here. It was in a deteriorated state, and they've done a wonderful job. So, during second reading, I'll do a brief presentation at that time.
Very good. Any questions or comments from council members? Councilman Citro, would you mind reading item number seven?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. File Number E-2021-8, Chapter 27, Ordinance being presented for first reading consideration, an ordinance approving an Historic Preservation Property Tax Exemption Application relative to the restoration, renovation, and rehabilitation of a certain property owned by Design Styles Architecture located at seventeen fifteen East Columbus Drive, Tampa, Florida, in the Ebor City Historic District, based upon certain findings, providing for notice of the property appraiser of Hillsborough County, providing for severability, providing for repeal of all ordinances in conflict, providing an effective date.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Citro, second from Councilman Miranda, roll call, vote.
Ding Felder?
Yes.
Gudes?
Yes.
Maniscalco?
Yes.
Viera? Citro?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously with Councilmember Viera being absent at vote. Second reading and adoption to be held on February fourth, 2021, at nine thirty AM.
Thank you very much. Item number eight has been continued. Item number nine ties in with item number eighty-eight. Item number nine, I believe there is a, because it ties in with eighty-eight, will there be a presentation on this?
Mr. Chairman, if it's the council's pleasure, if there's a presentation that's planned for item number eighty-eight, I'll take a look at the addendum and see if it's listed. Yes, I believe there is a PowerPoint for number eighty-eight, so if you wish to hold number nine to hear, till you hear number eighty-eight, that's, that I would be able to hear that and move it after the presentation.
All right, we'll do that.
Chairman, I move to hold number nine to eighty-eight. Second.
Okay, okay, that's fine. We have a motion from Councilman Miranda, second from Councilman Gudes, all in favor?
Aye.
So, we'll take that most likely after lunch. If it's sooner, it's sooner. Public Safety Committee Consent Agenda. Items number ten, eleven are tied together, just as an FYI. Councilman Citro, items ten through fifteen, sir.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to move items number ten through fifteen.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Citro, second from Councilman Miranda, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? All right, items sixteen through twenty-two, item seventeen and eighteen are tied together. This is Councilmember Gudes. Go ahead, sir.
Sir, let me move items sixteen through twenty-two.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Gudes, second from Councilman Citro, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? All right, next up is Public Works with Councilmember Dingfelder, items twenty-three through thirty-seven.
I just wanted to comment on item sixteen. Looks kind of exciting down in Gadsden Park, which is down there by MacDill Air Force Base. They'll, looks like they're going to be putting on water ski shows.
Oh, about time.
That's kind of neat.
Good. Remember, item number thirty-seven, we, we had continued that, so my mistake, it was through item number thirty-six that we're moving.
And, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I'll move items twenty-three through thirty-six. Item thirty-seven continued.
We have a motion from Councilman Dingfelder, second from Councilman Miranda, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next up, Councilmember Miranda with the Finance Committee, thirty-eight through forty-one.
Chairman, move items thirty-eight through forty-one.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Miranda with the second from Councilmember Citro, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Next up is Councilmember Carlson, Building, Zoning, and Preservation Committee, items forty-three through sixty-two, but I believe Councilmember Carlson would like to make some comments on item number forty-eight. Is it forty-eight, sir?
Yeah, just briefly, if you, for anyone who's reading the agenda, there are, there are really important things on the consent agenda sometimes, and, I mean, they're all important, but some really big projects that took a lot of time, and we should make sure we give credit. We've heard folks this morning and other times talk to us about helping the houseless or homeless, and it happens that Chief Bennett has a lot of experience in that from Pinellas County, and he's been working diligently behind the scenes, and there's a whole team of people who have been working on this, including Carol Post and, I think, Abby Feely and Kayon. And so, thanks to everybody who has put this together. It's not the final solution, but, but they're working diligently to try to solve this big gap we have of a fifty thousand unit shortage of homes, but also finding temporary places for people to live so that they can transition and not have to, to live in conditions that are not really livable. So, anyway, I just wanted to say thank you to everybody for working on that.
And Councilman Carlson, before you make your motion, I forgot to mention that item number forty-six needs to be continued to March fourth.
So, I make a motion and continue.
Can we make that as two separate motions, please?
Yes, sir. If we can get a motion to...
Motion move.
All right, motion from Councilmember Gudes to continue to March fourth, item number forty-six, second from Councilman Citro, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Councilman Carlson, through forty-five, and then...
Yes, I'd like to move forty-two through forty-five, and then forty-seven through sixty-two.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Carlson, second from Councilmember Miranda, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, next up is Transportation Committee, which would be Vice Chair, Councilmember Gudes, sixty-three to sixty-seven.
Sir, move items sixty-three through sixty-seven.
We have a motion from Councilmember Gudes. Do we have a second? Second from Councilmember Miranda, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Okay, we have an item, number sixty-eight, to be set, a review hearing to be scheduled for March fourth, 2021, at ten thirty AM.
Show move, Chairman.
Motion from Councilmember Miranda, second from Councilmember Citro, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, we go into our public hearings. May I have a motion to open item sixty-nine?
So, move.
Second.
Through seventy-six. We have a motion from Councilmember Gudes, second from Councilman Citro, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, item number sixty-nine is a second reading. Do we have anybody here to speak on that? Any presentation, anybody from the city? All right, do we have anybody from the public that wishes to speak on sixty-nine?
Move to close.
Second.
Hearing, no, we have a motion to close from Councilmember Miranda?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If we could just ask, just for the purposes of the record, that the clerk confirms that there is nobody registered to vote on these items.
Do we have anybody registered for item number sixty-nine? No? Oh, okay, we do have somebody registered for sixty-nine. Okay, seventy-one, I know we have Ms. Sanchez.
Chair, there is no one registered for item number sixty-nine.
All right, we have a motion to close from Councilmember Miranda, second from Councilmember Gudes, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Councilmember Carlson, would you mind reading item number sixty-nine?
Sure. File Number E-2020-8, CH2, Ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, Ordinance of the City of Tampa, Florida pertaining to economic development incentives, amending Chapter Two Administration of the City of Tampa Code by adding Article X entitled Economic Development Incentives, Division One, Generally, Section Two dash eight hundred Definitions, Section Two dash eight oh one sworn affidavit, and Section Two dash eight oh two, Exceptions, requiring recipients of City of Tampa Economic Development Incentives to execute and submit a sworn affidavit affirming the accuracy of any required reports to the City of Tampa, reserving Sections Two dash eight oh three dash through Two dash eight two five, providing for the repeal of all or parts of ordinances in conflict, providing for severability and providing effective date.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Carlson with the second from Councilmember Miranda, roll call, vote.
Ding Felder?
Yes.
Gudes?
Yes.
Maniscalco?
Yes.
Viera? Citro?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously with Councilmember Viera being absent at vote.
Can I just, just, just ten seconds. Again, thank you to Carol Post and Rob Rosner and Legal Department and others for putting this together. The purpose of it is just to make sure that if we do give economic development incentives, that we hold the folks accountable to keep their promises. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. We've opened all the public hearings. Next is item number seventy. If you are here to speak on item seventy, please raise your right hand, and we'll swear you in. All right. Can we, uh...
Chair, there are no other registered speakers except for item number seventy-one.
Okay, can we swear the, uh, folks in?
There's one behind you.
Yeah.
Could I make one?
Yes, sir.
Uh, for the record, um, I was, I was sick, I had food poisoning on the day that you all talked about these, so I just wanted to say that items, um, seventy through, um, seventy-six, I've, I've read the documents and, and reviewed the cases and feel confident voting on them, thank you.
Thank you very much, item number seventy.
Good evening, Council, Ryan Manassi with Development Coordination, item number seventy, file number REZ twenty dash twenty-one, it's the ordinance being presented before you for second reading and adoption, uh, the property location was sixty-eight oh five North Navin Avenue, and the request before you was, uh, rezoning from SHRS to SHPD for residential single families semi-detached, PD, um, or, I'm sorry, corrected site plans were turned into the zoning department for development coordination and are certified and turned into the city clerk's office, staff is available for any questions you may have.
Do we have any questions at this time? If you do not, all right, go ahead, sir.
Good morning, Councilmembers, Kevin Radley, four oh one East Jackson Street for the record, just here to answer any questions you all may have, thank you.
Do we have any questions for the gentlemen?
Um, which one?
This is item number seventy, sixty-eight oh five Navin Avenue. Do we have anybody in the public that wishes to speak on item number seventy? Do we have anybody at the kiosk? Do we have a kiosk?
Move to close.
We have a motion to close from Councilmember Miranda, second from Councilmember Citro, all in favor?
Aye.
All righty, Councilmember Ding Felder, would you mind reading item number seventy?
Sure. Uh, in regard to, uh, file number REZ twenty dash twenty-one, move the following ordinance for second reading and adoption, ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of sixty-eight oh five North Navin Avenue in the City of Tampa, Florida, more particularly described in Section One from zoning disqualification SHRS Seminole Heights Residential Single Family to SHPD Seminole Heights Plan Development Residential Single Family Semi-Detached, provide an effective date.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Ding Felder, second from Councilman Miranda, roll call, vote.
And Mister Chairman, just making a note that the site plan has been amended to include the revised revisions, along with the bonus specified by Mister Manassi.
Thank you very much. We have a motion from Ding Felder, second from Councilmember, uh, Miranda, roll call, vote.
Ding Felder?
Yes.
Gudes?
Yes.
Maniscalco?
Yes.
Viera? Citro?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Motion carry unanimously with Councilmember Viera being absent at vote.
All righty, next up is item number seventy-one, I know we have one registered speaker, um, that is, uh, Mister Mechanic here, we have the registered speaker, uh, I know that we didn't swear you in, so if you would raise your right hand, and, uh, I believe it's Ms. Sandy Sanchez that's on the line.
Mister Chairman, just as a point of order, um, I recall this was, uh, a little bit of a closer vote, um, and you have one council member who, who made the motion, who's not here.
I mean, you know, the funny thing is, we're talking all this for three days of work, it's just the demo, or something, you know?
I don't know who that, what that is.
Wait, please mute yourself, we can, we can hear your conversation.
Thank you.
Anyway, I don't know if you want to defer this, uh, if Mister, uh, if, if Councilman is returning?
I don't.
I haven't been sworn in.
[laughing] Mister, Mister, Mister Chairman, Mister Mechanic, I do apologize, I, I do apologize. Mister Chairman, for the record, can I ask the clerk to confirm what my vote was on, on this, the first reading?
Go ahead.
For item seventy.
Item number seventy-one?
Yeah, seventy-one.
Oh, I'm sorry. For item seventy-one, Gudes and Miranda voted no, and Councilmember Carlson was absent at vote.
Uh, okay, Mister Chairman, I, I, I could swear that I had voted no on this, but let's proceed.
Okey-dokey. Mister Mechanic, yes, sir?
Uh, yes, again, David Mechanic, um, we're here to answer any questions you may have, and I would like the opportunity to respond to any, uh, public comments that you might receive on the application, thank you.
I, I just didn't know if you wanted to go forward. Short.
We are short, oh, well, we have, uh, Viera's back.
Oh, Viera's back?
Sorry about that, I had it, yeah.
Are mine, all right?
I didn't see.
All right.
No, go, go ahead, I did have a question.
Mister Manassi.
Counsel, excuse me, Ryan Manassi, Development Coordination, item number seventy-one is file number REZ twenty dash sixty-three, um, this is before you for second reading and adoption, it's for the property located at five oh one North Howard Avenue, twenty-one thirteen West Gray Street and twenty-one fourteen and twenty-one eighteen West Carmen Street, uh, the request was from PD Plan Development, um, and RS fifty residential single family to PD for medical office and business professional office, uh, corrected site plans were turned in to our department and were certified and delivered to the city clerk, uh, staff will be available for any questions you have.
Do we have any questions at this time, Councilman Ding Felder, I believe you did?
I did, um, there was a little bit of confusion, Mister Manassi, and if, maybe if you could put up the, um, the revised or the, the, the site plan that is being, uh, proposed, um, there's a little bit of confusion in terms of the ability to, of the traffic that's in the new parking area, to be able to get, to, to get to the street to the north, what is the street to the north, uh, anybody help me?
Where, is it Carmen Street or?
Carmen.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, Carmen.
Because, any, anyway, if you could clarify that, um, would, is, is the parking lot sealed off so it's only accessible, um, to be able to go in and out from the, from the southern, the southern street, and then there was concern from the neighborhood in regard to the alley, if they can access the alley, then somehow or another, there was concern that, that, uh, you know, that, the traffic, instead of just coming in and out of the, the street at the bottom there, that they would come in and out of the alley and create a dangerous, uh, situation for the neighborhood, you know, going in and out of that alley. So if you could clarify both of those, uh, Ryan?
Yes, sir, uh, Councilman, the first part is, if, I'll zoom into the north on Carmen Street, as you can see, there's a proposed sidewalk and then the fifteen-foot buffer, so there is no vehicular access to this north part of the parking, um, I will draw your attention to the alley, um, just to kind of go into the next question that you're asking, as you can see, it's between both parcels that are through this PD, um, the existing being this existing south building here, and then the existing parking lot, then there's the alley, and also this alley then goes north to Carmen Street.
No, I'm not talking about.
But as you can see, you can't take.
I'm not talking about the north, I'm not talking about the north alley, I'm talking about, is there an east-west alley?
There is, right here, if you could see where my cursor is?
Yep, right.
And then it, that, I was just making a point, so you, you're, uh, aware that it does go north here, so this alley connects and then goes north here.
Okay, so they can go out, so they could leave the parking lot and go out the north alley and, and get up to Carmen?
Through the alley, the, the right away, correct, sir?
Okay, that, that's a little bit concerning to me, but Mister Mechanic can address that, thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, any other questions, comments, no, Mister Mechanic?
Uh, David Mechanic, um, uh, Mister Chairman, Councilmembers, um, Mister Ding Felder, and I have Randy Cohen here virtually, and I would ask him to address that remark, but I'd like to remind Council, we're not expanding the doctor's office, so there's no additional traffic, what we demonstrated at the first reading is that over fifty percent of the workdays in nineteen, in two thousand nineteen and the first two months of two thousand twenty, over fifty percent of the days had overflow parking, okay, so if we're not adding traffic, all of that overflow parking can go anywhere it wants, and the whole point of expanding the parking lot is to provide onsite parking and not have motorists, uh, driving up and down either Carmen or Gray Street looking for parking, at this point, I'd just ask, uh, Mister Cohen to speak to that.
Mister Cohen, were you sworn in, sir?
Um, speaking of the alley, it is a public alley.
I'm sorry, you can stop for a minute.
Mister Cohen, were you sworn in, I don't think you were, please raise your right hand. And, you know, everybody that's on the call, I see, uh, Mr. Ramirez.
Do you swear affirm you would tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
All right, go ahead, Mister Cohen.
Okay, the, the alley is a public alley, we have designed the parking lot to the extent we can to make it exceedingly unfriendly to use the alley for patient traffic, patient parking, um, however, we cannot block the alley since it's a public alley, um, we have not observed anyone using the alley related to this project and parking on the, the times I've been at the site, which have been a handful, um, uh, that's the best I can say, it's a public alleyway, uh, we cannot restrict or impede flow on that alleyway for anyone who would choose to use the alleyway.
Question?
Can I, a question from Councilman Ding Felder.
Mister Cohen, are, are you referring to the north-south alleyway or the east-west alleyway, or both?
They are both public alleys, therefore, we cannot restrict access to either of those alleys, we have designed our parking to make it very unfriendly for one to attempt to use the alley to, uh, gain access to the parking lot, but we simply cannot restrict it, um, unless the city were to close the alley.
Um, on the, the north-south alley, you own both sides of the alley, correct?
No, we do not own either of the north, on the north alley, we do not own the east or the west, on the east-west alley, we own a portion on the south and a small portion on the north, there is a portion that we do not own or abut on that alley just to the west of the proposed parking lot expansion.
Okay, thank you.
Again, I, I would just like to emphasize, we're not adding traffic, this is traffic that is currently overflow that we are trying to address, so that traffic can go anywhere it wants, including Carmen, up and down if it chooses today, so we are hopefully improving the situation dramatically.
And I would add that if we have adequate parking, we won't have patients circulating through the neighborhood trying to find parking, which is what's going on today, as well as staff parking off-site, so providing this additional parking should make things much better and much less likely for someone to even to attempt to use the alleyway to gain access to parking.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
Mister.
Councilman Citro?
Thank you very much, Mister Chairman, Mister Mechanic, Mister Cohen, uh, we are here to look at what the site pan, plan is showing us and make our, our, our decisions based upon the site plans, and I, I'm not questioning that, however, there was talk last time of using this as an overflow parking space after the business had closed. Now, it, it, the question needs to be asked, if this is going to be used for overflow because of what was done in prior history to, to, uh, businesses that have opened up around the area, the, the residents in the surrounding neighborhood weren't asked how they felt about it, and it, I'm, I'm now looking at this parking lot, which I know I shouldn't, however, the question still arises, does this become a surface parking lot for other businesses in the surrounding area? And if so, how could it be regulated in such a way that the residences that surround this parking lot aren't affected by noise, by lights at night, by, by different causes by this parking lot being used, and I use quotation marks, after hours? I, 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 it's tough, it's, it's going to be tough for me to vote yes on this when those questions haven't been answered to me properly, I know we're supposed to be looking at the site plans, I know we're supposed to be looking at the hours of operation, and you have a doggone good point by saying this is overflow parking for the business, but this is also more than likely going to be used for overflow parking by such places that, as the JCC across the street and a couple restaurants to the north of this property, which means now the city is going to have to be concerned about pedestrians walking back and forth across Armenia Avenue, which is a highly traveled street both day and night, so I, I just have some questions that, that I'm, I'm not comfortable with because I haven't heard the proper answers.
May, may I respond?
Yes, sir.
Um, David Mechanic, um, there was a lengthy discussion at Council first reading, my client authorized me to tell you that he has no intention of leasing or renting or allowing people to use the parking lot other than his patients and employees, Council debated whether or not to restrict my client's use of the parking lot to patients and employees, and we also stated for the record that we agreed with that, and we would agree to a condition to that effect, however, the motion specifically excluded that particular restriction.
And, Mister Chairman, if I may please, very quickly, and, and, and that is, is, is still going through my head, Mister Mechanic, and I realize that unless you put up some sort of fence about it, you can't control that, the business owner can't control that, and then more than likely, there's going to be people parking there, which is not a fault of the business owner or the property owner, it's just, how can we control that?
Well, my, my client can control, if there are trespassers on the property, they can have those cars towed away, and it would certainly be his intention to do that, because he wants the parking for his own office and his own patients, he doesn't want other people to be used.
Uh, uh, again, I have heard from residences around the area, I've heard homeowners associations, and this is a major concern of theirs.
And Mister Chairman, I'm sorry, if I can just, for the record, interrupt, uh, before Mister Mechanic has an opportunity to complete his discussion, um, again, Martin Shelby, City Council Attorney, uh, Council, I just want to, twofold, number one is to remind you, uh, and to state for the record, uh, that, um, uh, this is a second public hearing, and you have the opportunity to, to get, uh, new communications and new, um, uh, evidence to be heard at the meeting, and Mister Mechanic will certainly have an opportunity to, uh, to address those and rebut those if that's, um, uh, his, um, uh, his choice, uh, but for the purposes of the record, I want to just be clear of two things, number one is that written materials that have been, um, submitted and received, uh, have both been distributed to City Council and have been uploaded to Sire and is available for public inspection, um, uh, prior to this hearing, that's number one, so for the first purpose, I would ask that, uh, those comments and, um, and the record be received and filed, those communications that have been sent to City Council.
Move to receive and file.
Second, we have a motion from Councilman Citro, second from Councilman Gudes, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
And again, just for the purposes of clarity of the record, uh, with regard to ex parte communications, then I would ask Council to, um, state on the record, have there been any ex parte communications, other than the written communications, uh, that have taken place in this case, and also, if that is the case, to please designate, uh, with whom something was discussed and what was the subject of that communication, so I ask Council now, uh, have there been any ex parte communications that need to be disclosed? I see none for the record, Mister Chairman.
Thank you very much.
Mister Chairman?
Councilman Gudes.
Uh, at the first hearing, uh, I believe the reason that it was not entered into the plans with Mister Manassi, because we could not, or had no authority to, uh, control that situation, I believe that's why that was not entered into the original plan, uh, when that was, when that was brought up, am I correct, Mister Manassi?
That's correct.
Actually, Kate Wells, Chief Assistant City Attorney, if I, I may respond to that, there was a lot of discussion at first reading back in December with regard to conditions that would attach to how the establishment would be operated as opposed to how the land would be developed, and the, the challenge presented with the conditions proposed by the applicant was, it's their enforceability, how would the city, um, enforce a parking issue at night when code enforcement typically does not work in the evenings, who would the neighborhood call? And recognizing that any conditions imposed, uh, with this rezoning run with the land, they would apply regardless of the type of establishment operated here, and we, after first reading, I met with Abby Feely and Ryan Manassi to discuss this situation, um, especially as, as it could apply to other similar situations in the future, and it is the city's recommendation that when imposing conditions of approval with the rezoning, those conditions really need to focus on the land development regulations and, and not the operation of the business, and if Council does not typically control or regulate the hours of operation for other similar establishments, we would caution against including those conditions, um, in the rezoning approval, um, primarily because of the challenge the city would have in enforcing it, and by imposing those conditions, City Council is creating an expectation for the neighborhood that there is an enforcement, an easy enforcement mechanism, when in fact there would not be, so that, that is, um, the reason, I believe, or that I recall, um, that the condition offered up by the applicant was not included, um, in Council's motion in December.
Thank you, Ms. Wells.
Thank you very much. Anything else before? Anything else before we go to public comment?
Mister Mechanic, if he wishes to address counsel before you go to public comment?
Not at this time, I'd just like to respond to additional comments and questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, I see three people lined up that have been sworn in for public comment. Carlos Ramirez, you're first, go ahead, sir.
First, I'd like to say that there have been five of my neighbors who have given up their time so I can continue talking, so I should have a total of eight minutes. And I have that documentation if it's needed.
Mister Shelby, can we allow speaker waiver forms in a virtual format?
Sir, actually, speaker waiver forms for the purposes of what would be a physical speaker waiver form with having to have people virtually present, has been suspended per council's rules and resolution during the state of emergency. So, basically, Rule 6B applies. If counsel wishes to have somebody do that virtually, that being is how they would have that right to otherwise speak if they came down, you could give one additional minute for each speaker that waves. Maybe for the purposes of the record, Mister Ramirez could state the names of those people so counsel would know, so they wouldn't be able to waive themselves multiple times. And then counsel could have that level of comfort, or can counsel can just see what is reasonably needed to be able to have the petitioner have due process, or not the petitioner, the participant have due process, and then make a determination. I can read the actual rule, but it's ultimately counsel's decision as to how much additional time to grant. And mind you, that if counsel does grant additional time, in order to afford the petitioner due process, the petitioner may then also request additional time. So, you have to be respectful of that as well.
Okay, who are the people that have waived their time for you, Mister Ramirez?
I have Erin Anderson, Jennifer Thompson, Canfori Okana, Sarah Garcia, and Jonathan Hendrick. And I believe the emails were all sent to Mister Shelby.
Okay, do we have any objection to allowing this additional time, counsel?
Mister Mechanic?
Mister Mechanic, any objection? No, sir? All right. Go ahead, Mister Ramirez, then you have your eight minutes.
Thank you, sir, I'm gonna show my screen here real quick.
Okay.
Let me know when you can see it.
Yes, we can, we can see it, go ahead, and I see the names of the people. Thank you, sir.
My name is Carlos Ramirez, 2103 West Carmen Street. I'm the vice president and the representative of the North High Park Civic Association, and I am the liaison for the Neighborhood Watch. I am also North High Park Alliance's representative for the West Tampa CRA, CAC, and I chair the Infrastructure Subcommittee. I am also a professional engineer, registered in the state of Florida, and hold a Professional Traffic Operations Engineering Certificate, or PTOE, PTO as some people call it. The PTOE is the highest leveling licensing available in the field of traffic engineering. Currently, there are approximately only 3,000 licensed PTOEs in the U.S. and Canada. So, I've spent the last two decades practicing transportation engineering and safety. We walk past this parking lot every day, it is never full. Usually, when we see cars that are parked on the street, they belong to the law firm across the street or for special events in the JCC. We have concerns of the proposed expansion of the existing parking lot onto three residential lots, one of them being a double lot, which was Mister Tokli's home before. So, that's the potential of four single-family homes that could be put back into this community, into this neighborhood. Here is the latest site plan, I'm gonna speak of the site plan that was submitted on December 21st. Just to make it a little bit easier, I've added some shading so you can see the applicant's building, along with the parking lot and the two existing houses that are gonna be torn down for the parking lot. I added the public right-of-way on this slide, so you can see that we do have a paved alley all the way to Carmen on the north, and it goes all the way to Albany to the east. I have a large SUV vehicle, and I can go through this alley with no problems whatsoever. Circled in red are the two existing, mentioned existing exits, or two exits mentioned in the report, this is what the waiver is for. If we were just to use those two exits for the 29 vehicles on that northern parking lot, not worrying about the rest of the parking lot, but just that northern parking lot, we're gonna have a queue of 17 cars on site. So, the cars would have to wait to exit onto Gray, and with the entrance being so close to Howard, as you can see there on the left, there will be a backup of cars waiting on a gap on Howard, so they can make a right to go north or go straight through the intersection into Armenia to go south, remember these are one-way pairs. The same intersection I brought last time that has 12 crashes in the past five years. Of course, we know that is not what's going to happen, whether it's patients or staff from the practice during business hours or other non-residential uses during off-hours, cars are not going to wait in this line to exit onto Gray Street. There are other ways the cars will leave this proposed parking lot as brought up earlier. Cars will be using their access to the paved alley to go into the local streets and filter through our community, mainly using Gray and Carmen to access Albany to go north or south to Kennedy. And again, remember, Howard only goes one way, so they're limited to that movement there. We went around and looked at similar businesses, just as a comparison, to see how much parking other businesses, eye doctors have. We went and saw McDill, there are three physicians, 35 parking spots on South Armenia, 10 physicians, 47 parking spaces. Florida eye specialists had seven with 56 parking spots. The eye clinic has 11 doctors, and they only have 59 parking spaces. And I want to remind you, the applicant has, I believe, five physicians on site, and they're asking for 70-plus parking spots. Some area improvements around this, by the city around here, first is the city's Green Spine Project, which is under construction right now on Cass Street, and it goes from Howard all the way to Ebor. This project, once completed, will encourage and facilitate bicycle travel through its barrier-separated bike lanes. This project will connect the communities on both sides of the river, bringing new people to this area to visit the new businesses and the restaurants that are popping up, again, bicycles and pedestrians. Also, the city's mobility department has assigned Gray Street as a greenway from the west, from West Shore all the way to Rome. This means that Gray Street will get the complete street treatment of sidewalks and shared bike lanes. Gray Street has been chosen because it's a direct connection between Rome and West Shore. There are a lot of PDs that have gone on, have added empty family housing, so there's also a lot of traffic, so that's gonna help alleviate that area. As part of the redesigned Howard Armenia corridor, the county, at the request of the city of Tampa, will add three new crossings at the corners of Howard and Gray, Armenia and Gray, and Howard and Cass. The collaboration between the city and the county have resulted in fulfilling the needs of the neighborhood for safe passage across these busy streets that we brought up earlier to easily access the JCC and Villa Brothers Park. Here are two snippets of the letters sent by the city to the county that includes the locations and justifications for the new safety features. Please note on the far-right column that there is a history of accidents, including pedestrian and bicycle, and those are who we call vulnerable users. Expanding the parking lot would exacerbate the already dangerous and congested conditions here. And lastly, I want to bring up the Mayor's Vision Zero Plan, which the main objective is to have zero pedestrian crashes in 2021. The rezoning in our neighborhood is nothing new, we have conquered this before. Sometimes, we're able to successfully fight to conserve our community. Most times, we are not. Councilman Dingfelder and Miranda, you may remember the lot to the west of the alley. In 2008, that building was going to be a tea and coffee shop, and they wanted to use the residential lot across the alleyway as parking. The community was against it back then, and due to all the cars that would filter through the neighborhood and the safety for the kids that were playing in that area, and it was denied. It was about preserving neighborhoods. But you know, things don't change here in West Tampa. We are still concerned about the kids playing here, the preservations of our growing neighborhoods, as you can see the two new houses that just popped up there on Carmen Street. Our neighbor, Mister Tokli, lived here at the time, he sent a letter against this rezoning, I have it, he did not. Carmen Street resident Jonathan Hendrick spoke at the hearing back in 2008, and he's still against it, this type of expansion. He has sent a letter in opposition. He, he now has two kids of his own, and he's fighting to keep them safe. I went on Gray Street and knocked on the doors, and the folks on this block did not want to see this parking lot expansion. There are also 30 emails, some with pictures, sent to you that are all against the rezoning, and we request that to be in the record, and luckily, thank you guys, you guys said that earlier. We in the community leave with the result of these hearings. I spoke with most of you in the past, and the reason I voted for you and told my community to vote for you was due to the position on preserving our neighborhoods. So, we ask you to deny this rezoning on the basis that the proposed law will directly, will direct traffic to local residential roads, which goes against LE policy 6.1.9. It will interfere with the rights of those whose property would be affected, which goes against Section 27-1394, and goes against the transportation improvements being done by the city mobility department. Not only that, but there's gonna be an increase of cars that are going to create an unsafe condition in our surrounding community. Thank you, I'm here, do you have any questions?
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Kristen Rose. Yes?
Yes, can you hear me?
Wait, just a moment. What happened?
I can't, I can't hear the clerk, is the clerk attempting to speak? I'm sorry.
I want you to swear the public in.
Okay, we need to, Kristen Rose was sworn in, Sandy Sanchez was not sworn in. Miss Sanchez, if you could raise your right hand?
Was Mister Ramirez, I'm sorry?
Yes, he was, he was.
Please raise your right.
Miss Sanchez, if you could raise your right hand? Sandy, if you could raise your right hand? Your right hand, Sandy? Miss Sanchez, if you could hear me, please raise your right hand?
So it can be seen, please.
If we all wave, wave our right hand, maybe she'll-
Okay, there it is, all right. Where are you in?
Do you swear a firm, you would tell the- Do you swear a firm that you would tell the truth?
You would tell the true, and that's what's true?
I do. I do.
Great, Kristen Rose, go ahead.
Yes, good morning, council members. My name is Kristen Rose, and I am both a business owner and a long-term resident of North High Park. My residence is located at 2112 West Carmen Street, right next to one of the proposed lots, and my special events business is located on the 1500 block of West Cypress Street. I have resided in my residence with my husband and two young sons since 2003. I am here today to reiterate the email I sent to each one of you stating my family's opposition to the plan brought forward to turn several residential, single-family zone lots on my street into a commercial parking lot. This proposal does not appear to be consistent with Tampa's comprehensive plan, and furthermore, the petitioner, who owns a small eye clinic with only three doctors, to my understanding, does not need 70-plus parking spaces to operate. Even with all of their employees, they cannot possibly be booking 15 to 20 patients each at the, seeing and booking 15 to 20 patients each at the same time to require this much extra parking for their small business. I pass through their parking lot every day through the side alleyway to get to West Gray Street and cross North Howard, since West Carmen is not a through street to get to North Armenia, and I can tell you that their parking lot is never full, not even close, which tells me that they do not need this excess parking themselves, and instead must have plans to lease this parking lot for evening and weekend, weekend events to possibly the JCC without any regard for the surrounding residents. I attached a few photos to the email that I had sent to each one of you for visual reference of my property located at 2112 West Carmen Street, as well as the petitioner's current parking lot during business hours. I purchased my home with my husband in 2003, and never did we imagine that a commercial parking lot would be allowed to butt up right next to our home located in the middle of the block. We did not purchase a corner lot, we purchased our home in the very middle of a residential, single-family street. If this project is approved, my family and I will have to look at a brick wall right outside of our living room window, which will be only eight feet from the edge of our house, which you can see, I'm, I'm positioned on my living room sofa right now, and you can see out my window, that grass is going to be the parking lot, and the house behind it is, is slated, was Mister Tokli's, and slated to be torn down. Since the projected masonry wall is only six feet tall and my house is elevated, we will have random people who park in that lot at any time of the day or night be able to look directly and shine their car lights right into my living room windows. I ask you to ask yourselves if you would be okay with this project being approved by your city council members, especially considering the plan is not consistent with the city of Tampa's comprehensive 2040 plan. I'm here to ask that you do not approve this plan, and if you do choose to approve this plan, then I kindly ask for you to please provide an explanation as to why you think this is a good plan to move our residential street and the city of Tampa's comprehensive plans forward. Thank you for your time and consideration for my family's opposition.
Thank you very much. Next up is Sandy Sanchez. Miss Sanchez, can you hear me? You're good to go.
Yes, I was just getting something on my screen.
Sure.
First, I also have, have, three members of my community have sent in letters, Renee Champion, Jeff Ball, and Haika Freehoff, allowing me to take up their time, which would give me a total of six minutes, I ask for your approval to use this time.
Is there any objection from city council? Hearing none, go ahead, you have six minutes.
If we could also inquire, Mister Mechanic?
Mister Mechanic, any objection? No objection, you're good to go.
Okay. My name is Sandy Sanchez, and I live at 2705 West Fig Street, and I represent the Armory Gardens community that is directly to the west of the North High Park community and the JCC. I apologize for not having photos, but I was planning to come down with the handouts, but decided against it because of the pandemic. I will be referring to Mister Ramirez's report, because he's offered information that reinforces our premise, the size of this proposed parking lot is not warranted for the number of physicians that are attached to this practice. North High Park and Armory Gardens have many of the same issues that we work closely together with, heavy traffic, cars speeding through our neighborhood, overflow parking from the JCC, narrow streets, and little or no sidewalks. We share an interest in the safety and security of our neighbors. One of the biggest issues, and the city council members brought this up at the first hearing, is the idea that this proposed parking lot would be a winning proposition for the practice, the JCC, and the neighborhood. Nothing could be further from the truth. This parking lot will only add to the congestion in the neighborhood and jeopardize their safety. The parking lot will not deter the 200 to 300 JC guests from parking on Howard, Carmen, Gray, or Cass Street and North High Park. The valet company that the JCC hires for their events guide 200 to 300 cars into our neighborhoods and provide a six-passenger golf cart, which picks up the guests and delivers them to the JCC. They block our, these cars block our driveways, block the side paths for neighbors trying to back out of the driveway, litter our streets, slam doors, and race out of neighborhoods with little concern for the disturbance they cause. Dogs bark, children, children are crying, they disregard families that are walking in the streets. No one patrols traffic after these events. Remember, the JCC has events for breakfast, lunch, and the evening, they're also open on weekends. When the new 200 apartments that are being completed on Lemon and State Street, they will add another 200 cars to our neighborhood, thanks to the past administration and those of you that were on the council for approving this. The proposed locking lot has easy access to Carmen and Albany and other residential streets via existing alleys. With the petitioner neglected to mention this at the first hearing is unknown to us. Did I mention that there are 10 children and one on the way just on the 2100 block of Carmen? And it would also be remiss of me not to mention that the new demain homes directly across the street from the proposed parking lot on Carmen just sold for $587,000 and $597,000 respectively, with a third one being built. This is very valuable prophecy. The neighborhood feeds, this neighborhood feeds A-ranked schools in the city of Tampa. It is, it is valuable and it is desirable. This unneeding parking, parking lot will be built on four expensive, desirable residential lots. Wouldn't this neighborhood be better served if there were residential homes, single-family homes, or duplexes on it? The proposed rezoning will jeopardize the safety of the community and decrease the value of the properties that surround it. We walk, run, bicycle to the Villa Brothers Park, the JCC, Somi's on Howard, to the Julian B Lane, and even to the restaurants on Kennedy and NoHo. We are a, a, a community of pedestrians. Both neighborhoods have been working diligently with the city of Tampa Mobility Department because they heard our voices and our safety concerns, and have reacted by adding four-way stops and new speed limit signs to help our already traffic congested neighborhoods. And now, the much-needed pedestrian beacon crossings on Gray and Cass. They wouldn't be putting these there if there weren't, if this wasn't a high- They wouldn't be putting these there if there weren't, if this wasn't a high-volume area. Ten or twelve years ago, and some of you are members of the council that approved parking variance for the JCC, the required parking was your five hundred and forty-seven parking places and you approved two hundred and forty-seven for a forty-seven percent reduction. These neighborhoods, Armory Gardens and North Hyde Park, have paid dearly for the variance you approved every time there is a major event at the JCC. Does the JCC not need parking? Hell, yes, they do, but on their own property and on their neighborhoods. Our safety should not be sacrificed. Does the petitioner need more parking space? No, he does not. The decisions you make are permanent. They don't just disappear. It's not like changing the color of paint on a house. If you vote for this rezoning for this parking lot in this residential area, you will set a precedent to allow other pop-up parking lots. These neighborhoods don't deserve the added danger. Please don't continue to punish them and please don't start this precedence. As Mr. Ramirez mentioned, some of you may remember that I attended many forums when you were running for office. Each of you prioritize the need of, of the neighborhood. We ask you to honor that pledge and deny this petition based on the facts that we have presented and for the safety of the neighborhood. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you so much. Count, uh, Mr. Mechanic.
Uh, David Mechanic again for the record. Um, given the additional time that council granted, uh, I would, if I could, uh, uh, request twelve minutes to respond, uh...
Is there any objection to that? Cutting into our lunchtime.
Okay, I'm sorry about that. I'll try and make it in last time.
I'm kidding, go ahead, sir.
Um, I, I, I am going to ask Randy Cohen to address most of the comments since they are, relate to both the parking demand question and the question of compatibility of the use, um, both of which he addressed extensively at the first, uh, reading. I, I would just point out regardless of whether Mr. Ramirez is a PE or not, he may be qualified, but his testimony is anecdotal. Uh, that is, he observed on one particular day or ten particular days, but he didn't do an analysis of the usage throughout the entire year and Mr. Cohen did. He looked at the patient, um, uh, attendance for every business day in two thousand nineteen and two months in, uh, twenty twenty before COVID. Obviously, the, the numbers would be skewed after the COVID, uh, hit and affected, uh, the, uh, parking demand and office, doctor's office demand. So with that, I'll just ask Mr. Cohen to, to respond to the other comments of the residents. And I'd like to just offer a concluding remark after he's finished.
Thank you. Uh, I'd like to share my screen, please.
We can see it, go ahead, sir.
Okay, uh, first, let's dispel the issue that the parking lot is never full. This is a picture that was taken mid-morning on December the tenth, which was the day of the first hearing. Parking lot is virtually full. Spaces beside the office building are full. The north driveway aisle is full. The center driveway aisle actually has two spaces available. The aisle closest to Gray Street has one space available. So, three spaces, all that's available. The parking lot is basically full. Parking on the street, if you look at this one example in the lower right, this is actually a patient parking in the right-of-way. The gentleman getting out of the rear of the car is elderly, which a number of these patients are, and the number of these patients have significant eye issues. Uh, as a result, it's an unsafe situation for employees to be parking on the roadway. It's an unsafe situation for patients to be parking on the roadway. Staff generally parks on Westland, not on Gray Street because of the multi-use building that's to the south of the side over here, and that's predominantly their cars parking there, with the exception of perhaps a few of our staff employees parking there. Um, this particular entity has also complained several times to the eye clinic about parking on the street, et cetera. Uh, move on to the next slide. Matter of fact, that's a slide that shows you where the parking is generally along Westland and generally along this part of Gray and the north side that's used by staff. Let's talk about staff for a moment. Um, I'll go back to this staff. Heard various things of various numbers of doctors and staff at this facility. There is a maximum of seven doctors at this facility and a maximum of ten staff. That's seventeen people. That's basically half of the parking lot on any day if they were to park in the parking lot. Moving to that for a moment, you'll see on the screen that's up, I have three columns, over two hundred percent parking, over two hundred and fifty under, over two hundred and eighty-six percent parking. That's based upon the fact that we reviewed patient scheduling and staff scheduling for every workday in twenty nineteen and the first two months of twenty twenty. At the point where you see the column with twenty percent, two hundred percent, that is when staff is required to park off-site. If staff were to park onsite, parking lot would be full at times of the day, every one of those days, which is ninety-five workdays out of the year. The lot actually appears to be half to perhaps two-thirds full, maybe three-quarters on these particular ninety-five days because all of the staff is parking off-site. When we get the two hundred and fifty percent mark, of course, staff is parking off-site. We have basically seventy-five to a hundred percent of the parking lot full at the peak times of the day. If staff were to be there, it would be every day. Two hundred and eighty-eight percent, that is when even with staff parking off-site, we have parking in excess on a peak demand of the parking available on the site. Total together, this is a hundred and thirty-five days out of the year, that workdays out of the year, which is approximately fifty percent, that if staff were parking in this parking lot, the parking lot would be over full. Um, want to talk about, um, the particular issue of the JCC. It is not our desire to park JCC parking in these particular lots. It's not that desire at all. As I understand, the JCC is currently building a parking structure, uh, to handle their parking, which is a problem for the neighborhood and a problem for everyone involved. However, this is not something that will add to opportunities for JCC to park off-site. Um, talk just a moment about, uh, Mr. Ramirez and his queuing analysis. You have to realize that that was a very carefully worded statement by him. His assumption was the north parking lot would be totally full and every one of those cars would leave at exactly the same moment to attempt to create a seventeen-vehicle queue. That will not happen, that has not happened, that cannot happen, and it's based upon faulty assumptions and frankly, faulty analysis determining that seventeen cars would be in a queue. Um, finally, uh, if I could suggest something perhaps, if there is concern with the north parking lot, while we, in the first hearing, suggested and recommended that not only would we accept a condition of no parking after hours, we also suggested and accepted a condition that the property would be posted for towing, so in fact, the towing company could remove anyone that was there after hours. Those were items discussed at the first hearing. What I hear today and listen to is that the north parking lot is the, uh, larger area of concern. There is a simple solution for the north parking lot and that is simply to gate the sole access to that parking lot, uh, when business is concluded by the day by the optometrist and the eye clinic staff itself. Easy to do, easy for a code inspector to come out at any time and see whether that gate is locked or not. We, I believe, would be willing to offer that as well. We cannot do that on the existing south parking lot because of its configuration and how it is actually, uh, also accessed by the alleys. I will say that Mr. Ramirez's comments about the vehicle queue that would create the demand for folks to use the alleyway to exit is based solely on the fact of his faulty assumptions to create a seventeen-vehicle queue in a parking lot to then force people to use the alley. The queue will not occur, the use of the alley should not occur, the easiest exit from this property continues to be the existing driveway at Gray Street. Um, that driveway has been taken into consideration by the Greenway study that was done on Gray Street and the traffic calming issues and pedestrian improvements that are requested on Gray Street. Those all go a long way to, in fact, eliminate traffic from utilizing Gray Street other than to access this parking lot and to leave. The comments made that this will increase traffic? No, this will actually decrease traffic because in fact, we have folks parking on the street and circulating to find parking spaces. The patrons will come to this facility regardless of whether parking is there or not. The owner, uh, has gone to extreme lengths and costs to provide this additional parking to be a good neighbor, to provide all the parking needed for this facility onsite to stop the practices of parking off-site. Um, he should be applauded for doing this. At the end, I will move to another slide. We went through sixteen examples of parking lots of this type that exist all over Tampa and are permitted, but I would like to say that in this particular area, this is a consistent pattern. On this particular area, moving from Kennedy Boulevard to the north, Howard to Westland, which is the blocks we're talking about, first block, commercial parking lot, now under construction, excuse me. First lot, commercial parking lot for years, it's now under construction with facility and a massive parking lot. This is Hardeman Kemper Landscape and Services Company parking over here. This is the Williams Funeral Home. They actually maintain a parking lot here and here on a grass lot. This is the multi-use office building on the south side of Gray that has its parking lot, also utilizes a parking lot that it has approved in this area here, as well as parking along the south side of Gray. This is the subject site, right in line with the other parking lots and trying to avoid parking that it would have on Westland and on the north side of Gray. Happy to answer any questions you may have. I believe I addressed all of the significant issues that were brought up by the objectors.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mechanic?
I would just like to conclude our presentation by saying, we, we would certainly offer to put the gate up if that made a difference to council. Uh, again, I think Ms. Wells advised you that you're not supposed to consider the operational aspects of a business and so therefore, our commitment or statement that we will not rent to JCC or allow JCC to park can't be considered by you, but likewise, the neighbors' comments that they assume we will be, uh, allowing JCC to park there is equally inappropriate for council's consideration. Um, I would just like to end by saying that, um, there's been no new competent substantial evidence to, uh, uh, contradict the evidence that was presented at the first reading and the bases on which, uh, a majority of council, uh, supported, uh, this application on first reading. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I sense Councilman Dingfelder has a question. He's in deep thought.
I saw Mr. Citro first, but I, I do have a question.
All right, Councilman Citro, then Councilman Dingfelder.
Thank you very much. I was concerned that, uh, whether or not they're leaving all at one time or one by one, that vehicles would be going through the, uh, the neighborhoods. I do not like to redesign anything from the dais. However, I believe it's called a pork chop at the exits, both north and south, where it forces cars to go in one direction to the other. Would you consider putting those in so that vi- uh, vehicles are forced to go to Armenia whenever they leave the, uh, the parking lots?
I would ask Mr. Cohen to speak to that.
Mr. Cohen?
Um, pork chops would require public works approval and solid waste approval. Certainly not opposed to it, however, if you're talking a pork chop at the end of the northern alleyway onto Carmen, um, we have no problem with that, but it would be a public works project and approval. Uh, we could not guarantee it. We could certainly request that of public works of desire. And of course, solid waste would also have a point in that particular item of whether they would accept it or not. Um, pork chop at our driveway on Gray Street, again, we could construct that, it would require public works approval. That one has, I think, a better likelihood of being approved, however, our solid waste is serviced through that driveway, so again, it would become, um, the purview of solid waste as to whether they would accept the pork chop or not. Certainly not opposed to it. Mr. Citro, uh, would like to say that yes, we would do it, but you have to understand it's a decision that is largely out of our control.
Mr. Chair, if I may. Mr. Manassi, how hard would it be for, uh, the petitioner to conceivably put in these pork chops?
I think, uh, councilman, uh, as Randy stated, it, it's going to take other departments to approve that kind of, uh, development, especially if it's outside the purview of the property boundary. Um, as far as the rezoning, if you're adding any additional items like that, um, that are outside the property boundary, again, I don't, I don't see how they're relevant to this. Kate might be able to, uh, help me out a little bit with that. Um, as far as the timeline, if you are going to make any kind of modifications to this, then we'd have to continue out this reading, um, for site plan revisions and that to be reviewed by their appropriate departments like solid waste and transportation and such. But, um, I believe it's outside of our purview, this rezoning, anything off the property boundary.
Thank you, Mr. Manassi.
Councilman Dingfelder.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I'm not sure who to ask this question of. I'll start with, uh, with Ryan and I think I might have bumped on this question at the first hearing. Uh, what is the, the square footage of the office, of the medical office, Ryan? And? Go ahead.
I'm sorry, do you want me?
The square footage, the square footage of the, of the doctor's office? Do we know?
Yes.
And, and the reason I'm asking is, I'm curious of what the required number of spaces are for the medical use as compared to what the number of spaces are that they have right now, as compared to what the number of spaces are that they're asking for.
So I was just doing a quick calculation just back off of it. Um, sorry, I'm going through the site plan as well. Um, so the required parking is six per thousand for medical office use. The, the property as is, uh, is seventy-five hundred square feet roughly, so...
Sounds like forty.
I believe, I'm sorry, I'm trying to do the calculations and Randy may have those numbers up. He's probably waving.
It looks like, under, under what you just said, it looks like forty-five, forty-six, forty-five and a half.
Yeah, so seventy, sixty-nine is the building.
Ryan, if I may?
Sure.
Forty-two spaces are required. The existing parking lot actually has thirty-two spaces, so they are short on parking by six space, by almost ten spaces. They reconfigured the parking lot at their expense to bring them up to thirty-five spaces. There's still seven spaces below what the required number would be for this particular site.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, this is Ron Lewis, the inspector.
Oh, and the last question I had was, and I think I asked this last time and didn't get an answer, was what is the total number of spaces after, assuming it's approved and after it's rebuilt?
Uh, the total number of spaces would be seven, seventy-four. This is Randy Cohen, uh, based upon the revised site plan that we submitted, uh, and that Ryan certified, uh, just recently and is before you today.
Okay, so, so the, so just to recap, the, based upon the square footage of a, a doctor's office, our code in a, in a new, yeah, a new construction scenario requires forty-five spaces and the, and the petitioner is looking for seventy-four spaces, which is a difference of, Charlie's better at this than I am, but it looks like twenty-nine additional, or twenty-nine spaces.
Again, just to clarify though, I think we've documented the need, given that fifty- Again, just to clarify, though, I think we've documented the need, given that fifty, over fifty percent of the workdays, the people are foreforced to park offsite.
All right. Are there any other questions or comments? Councilmember Viera, yes, sir.
And I know we can't consider this, but the gate you were speaking about, just for my own information and for the community listening, Mr. Mechanic, can you describe said prospective gate?
I couldn't hear you.
Yes, sir, the gate that you were speaking of.
Yes.
Could you talk about that?
Yeah, I mean, we'd be happy to install it. I think, I think that is a, Ryan would need to confirm this, but that is within the purview of the PD zoning because that would be an onsite condition. I believe Ryan will tell you that we may have to postpone second reading to modify the site plan to that effect, but we would be happy to do that. And we, the gate would be on my client's property, so it would be within the jurisdiction of the PD, so to speak. We'd be happy to do that.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Kate Wells has her hand up. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I've been trying to figure out a good time to jump in here without interrupting anybody. I just wanted to remind City Council that the PD criteria starts on page four of your staff report, and if you've got any questions, Ryan Manassi can certainly speak to the criteria. With respect to the gate that's being proposed for the north parking lot, that is an item that would be appropriate for council's consideration as a condition to mitigate the impact of the proposed use on the surrounding residential neighborhood, because that is, that would be a land development condition of approval as opposed to a condition that relates directly to how the establishment would be operated. So I would submit to council that that would be an appropriate condition for your consideration.
Thank you very much. All right. If there are no other questions or comments, may I have a motion to close?
Move to close.
We have a motion closed by Councilmember Guz. Do you have a second?
Second, Viera.
Second from Councilmember Viera, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Okay. Councilmember Dingfelder, would you like to read item number seventy-one? No? Councilmember Viera, would you like to read item seventy-one?
I'll read it. I hereby move an ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption ordinance resoning property in the general vicinity of five zero one North Howard Avenue, two one one three West Gray Street, and two one one four and two one one eight West Carmen Street, in the city of Tampa, Florida, more particularly described in section one from zoning district classification PD plan development and RS fifty residential single family to PD plan development, medical office and business professional office, providing an effective date. And Ms. Wells, do I need to specify the gate inclusion, or?
Excuse me, if I can?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Wells, I guess, is here to answer that, but the question is?
Or Mr. Shelby?
Does your, well, first of all, I just want to bring to your attention the additional added comments relative to the findings with regard to the comprehensive plan and the city code, but is it your intention, was it your intention, or is it your intention, Mr. Viera, to include that condition?
Yes, sir.
If that is the case, I just want to make sure that that was, Mr. Mechanic, I believe, did state that there would be no objection to that. I don't know whether it's necessary to reopen the hearing for that to be on the record, but that's my understanding.
Out of an abundance of caution, maybe we should.
Maybe we should.
Move to reopen.
We have a motion to reopen from Councilman Citro. Do we have a second?
Yep.
Second from Councilman Viera, all in favor? Mr. Mechanic?
David Mechanic, for the record, we would agree to that condition to be added as part of the PD zoning approval.
Mr. Chairman, if I can, as a result of that, I believe Ms. Wells did indicate that that would require a continuance, that would be appropriate if that is Mr. Mechanic's desire to do so and would have no objection. I'd ask that he state that on the record so that council can take the appropriate action so it can be brought back to council at a future date to be determined today for a continuation of the second reading with a revised site plan. Mr. Mechanic?
That would be my understanding.
I'm sorry, Ms. Wells might want to say something.
I guess I'm trying to decide whether it's a continuance of the second reading or if we go back to first reading, because the certified site plan would now need to be revised again and certified by staff to show that gate, so I think we would actually go back to first reading, and that could be done today, and then the modifications to the site plan between first and second reading. But I'd like Mr. Manassi to confirm that as well, or if a different approach is being considered.
Ryan Manassi Development Coordination, I would agree with Kate. The staff would have to review the revised plan again and recertify that document, so I think out of the abundance of caution to make sure this is handled correctly, then if this motion passes to continue to treat this as first reading, and then we would receive the revised site plan from the agent, review it, recertify it, and come back to a second reading.
Councilman Citro?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Then, Mr. Wells, Mr. Manassi, at this time, my concerns about that pork chop, if we are going to bring this back to first reading, can I also ask for that, too?
So I think our recommendation today of council's motion is inclined to pass with the proposed condition for the gate is that it would actually, the ordinance would actually be placed on first reading today. I think between first and second reading, staff can reach out to the appropriate city departments to discuss those offsite improvements and have us coordinate that if those are even a possibility. But as Ryan mentioned, because those proposed improvements are outside the boundaries of the site plan, I don't believe those could be added as conditions of approval.
All right, thank you very much. You've heard my concern, Mr. Mechanic and Mr. Cohen?
Mr. Shelby?
Thank you.
Yes, I just want to hear, I'm sorry, Mr. Cohen, I believe Councilman Citro had a question or comment. Refer to Mr. Mechanic.
Yeah, I'm prepared to answer. For the record, Dave Mechanic again. I think, just to contradict Ms. Wells on one point, we could, it's very common in a PD to require the pork chop on the driveway entering into the property. I don't think we can, I don't think we can do any improvements offsite, okay? But I think we could, that entrance on Gray Street could be conditioned with a pork chop, assuming the agencies agreed to it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mechanic.
Mr. Guz, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Viera has started his motion already, unless he's withdrawing the motion to ask for these stipulations, because I think a vote would need to be taken right now, at this point, correct?
No, sir. What was done was, there was a condition that was not really addressed before the close of the public hearing, and the condition is included, and we took additional testimony and additional questions. So the public hearing is open, and that motion would need to be remade after the close of the public hearing. So as a matter of the way the business is conducted, that motion was superseded by the motion to reopen the public hearing.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
I, procedurally, I'm not sure where we are.
That's why I asked those questions.
Will you close the public hearing and then we take a motion?
If it, it seems to be what would be appropriate, then, and Ms. Wells, I'm going to leave it to you, but I just want to see, would it be appropriate, then, for Mr. Mechanic, then, to have no objection to this being sent back to first reading with those conditions being added, and then the title being read again with those conditions being made, and then it be moved, and then it would come back for second reading with the modifications? Please address those questions and give council some direction.
We have no objection. David Mechanic again.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Just as a point of order, I don't know if it's appropriate procedurally, but my desire at this point is to make a motion to deny the petition, which would, you know, obviously preclude the need to send it back, et cetera. I hate to see people going through all the trouble of making changes and having expectations that if there's four members of this council who might agree with my motion, or three other members, then let's just put it to bed now. But I don't want to step out of line, Mr. Shelby, procedurally. You know, I don't know if there's a pending motion or whatever that would preclude me from doing that, but I just wanted to state, I don't believe the mitigation that's being proposed vis a vis a gate or some abstract pork chop that can't be put on the site plan is adequate to protect that neighborhood, and that's why I'm ready and willing to make a motion to deny. So you can tell me, or Mr. Chairman, you can tell me when and if that's in order.
Ms. Wells, did you have anything you wish to opine on with regard to that? I certainly have, understand, I understand your question, and it's in the posture we're in, it's a very interesting situation. I just want to make sure that Ms. Wells and I are in agreement. Do you?
Thank you, Mr. Shelby. With respect to a motion to deny, I believe there's a motion to approve on the floor that was seconded, and we got distracted with the discussion on conditions to be added to the motion. With respect to the conditions, one would be to include a gate around the, on the north parking lot, and then the second discussion was with respect to the design of the driveway, including a pork chop, and David Mechanic confirmed for the record that that design would actually be within the driveway within the property, so that could be a condition added to the site plan. When I spoke earlier, I understood that the pork chop was going to be offsite in response to Mr. Cohen's comments, so if, in fact, Mr. Mechanic is offering up that the design of the driveway within the property could address that, then that's a separate issue, and it could be included as a note on the site plan, that that can be addressed and designed during the permitting. If, I'll defer to Mr. Shelby on the procedural issue, but if the maker of the motion wants to withdraw it, then I think council would be, it would be appropriate for council to consider any other motion. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, my understanding was the motion, and the clerk confirmed, was an ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, which would then preclude any additional conditions.
Yeah, may I, may I try to make the, so procedurally, would I make a motion for first reading with the, with the gate, and if the pork chop fits?
And my understanding?
Yes, it would be returning to first reading.
Yes, and my understanding is that would require a vote of council, which would also require an affirmative vote of four in order to move forward on that.
Let's then close the public hearing.
Move to close.
The public hearing motion from Councilman Citro, second from Councilman Dingfelder, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right, Councilman Viera?
Yes, I'll read this for, and should I read the whole thing again?
Yes, sir, because now it is an ordinance being presented for first reading consideration.
Okay, I present an ordinance for first reading consideration, ordinance resoning property in the general vicinity of five oh one North Howard Avenue, two one one three West Gray Street, and two one one four and two one one eight West Carmen Street, the city of Tampa, Florida, more particularly described in section one from zoning district classification PD plan development and RS residential single family to PD plan development, medical office and business professional office, providing an effective date with the aforementioned additions of the pork chop, I don't know if there's a more formal term in the driveway.
You may want to ask if it's not clear, we want to make clarification, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Yes, no, you're fine.
But to be, get guidance from staff how best to address your motion, just to make sure it's clear.
And if I may, how best to articulate that formally?
This is Ryan Manassi Development Coordination. I'm not a transportation engineer, so we may want to circle back with Randy to, if we want a technical term for the pork chop, a traffic diverter at the entrance of the street in question, or something along that lines?
If I might suggest what we're, and this is Randy Cohen again, if I might suggest what we're talking about is restricting a left turn out of the driveway onto Gray Street, so I would make the motion in terms of providing a physical deterrent to making a left turn from the driveway, southbound left turn to eastbound Gray Street.
Just a point of order, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, a constituent just texted me and said that we have not been broadcasting on CCTV for the last thirty-five minutes. I don't know if that creates a sunshine problem. I want us to have a good, clean record for Mr. Mechanic either way. Like, you know, I don't even know if there's a requirement for us to broadcast, but since we're in this bizarre hybrid, I just felt it was important to raise the issue. I'm not trying to muddy the water, I hope everybody believes me, but...
Mr. Chairman?
Eric, are you, are you aware of that? Apparently, we're not broadcasting on CCTV?
Could you get Chuck to the microphone?
Yeah, we can't hear you.
Hi, Eric Hayden, city of Tampa, TNI Department. Yeah, we have a Fios issue over at our broadcast studio, so we're actually working on it right now.
Okay. And is that approximately correct, about thirty minutes that we've been out?
It's been about thirty minutes, correct. Now, you have, those who are participating with GoToWebinar can see, those who are watching the channel can see. It's only those that are looking at the live stream on the web.
Yeah, I just tried pulling it up, and we're not Facebook Live and all that stuff.
Correct. That part is affected because we've lost the connection to live stream.
Why don't we do this? While that is getting fixed, why don't we go to lunch, and then it gets resolved? All this talk about pork chop.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman? I know IT works very hard. In the future, when that does happen, could you alert this council and the chairman, so we can let the public know, because I think Ms. Dingfelder raised a good question. So in the future, could we do that, sir?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, so, Mr. Mechanic, just so things are clean, can we hold this item until after lunch? All right, it's twelve thirty-seven, we'll come back at two o'clock. We are in recess until then, we'll continue this and finish the agenda. We are in recess until two. We are in recess until two.